Opened public conference. And I would ask that anybody that wishes to speak, and then also our presenters, we have some special presentations tonight, to go to that dice back there and speak from that microphone. Joan, you're gonna have lots of fun there with the broken data. But anyway, all of our speakers, unless, can everybody hear me okay? I would say if any speakers want to just speak from where they're sitting, that would work too.
The problem is, we're gonna have to record it for, for the record.
That's right. So, you're gonna have to go up to the podium there, behind Ms. Archer, and speak. So, our first speaker card is Sean Dees. Would you like to go to the microphone there?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here representing the Fillmore Chamber of Commerce, specifically in regards to the annual Fillmore May Festival. I'm just here to notify and kind of give you guys a brief insight of what we've got going on. This year coming up is our 100th year anniversary for the event, so it's been going really strong, especially the last about five to seven years. We've kind of had a rebuttal from a downturn, but we're going strong. This year, we're actually looking to move the event to Two Rivers Park. One of the biggest reasons behind that is because we've kind of reached our capacity of town as far as the occupancy of the vendors and the carnival area in order to expand with having different entertainment and venues. We've kind of collaborated with vendors and a lot of our companies that we've contracted with over the years, and a lot of people want to see change. So, this is a vision that I've had personally since I came on about seven years ago, just to help out the event. It's something that we've been gearing towards and working towards, and right now, we've actually got a lot of support as far as sponsorship coming in, because I think as companies and vendors and local businesses see the potential being exposed at Two Rivers Park, they all want in on it, and they want it to be, knowing that it's a new park, they feel that this is the prime opportunity to showcase the city's heart, but at the same time, let it be a win-win for all, kind of. Another thing that I wanted to just go over briefly is, we've got applications that we're accepting as we speak for local vendors, so be on the lookout within the next couple of weeks. You guys will see some information in the local newspapers, Channel 10. For the first time ever, we actually went out and did our own website, so the FillmoreMayFestival.com website was up and running as of a few weeks ago. You can get all the latest step-to-date information on there. And just some side notes is, knowing the carnival being able to expand, we typically get about 11 rides up here in the lot that we've had in for many years, and this year, we're actually looking at getting between 24 to 26 rides up in the area. And one thing that we're gonna do with that is segregate the kiddie area from the bigger kid ride area, and in return, that's gonna give parents peace of mind that, you know, if they want the younger crowd to be with the younger crowd, they don't have to be intertwined with the bigger kids, and they can have more peace of mind knowing that they're in one specific area. And to satisfy the vendors, a lot of them over the years don't like the fact that they can't be X amount of feet apart from one another. They all kind of like to have their own spacing in between, and if they have their own generators, et cetera, then, you know, there's things that kind of go behind that aspect of it more in detail, but there's, you know, been a big push for this to go on, especially being that it's the 100th year. We are bringing in international entertainment for the first time to Fillmore. We've actually already contracted with a particular band known as the SOS Band, and so right now, we're, you know, fine-tuning a lot of the details in specific, but if you guys have any questions, concerns, feel free to visit the website. We have our contact information on there, which is the chamber's office, and then there's also my direct contact on there as, I'm the event coordinator for the event. So, if there's anything in specific, you guys can reach me directly through the contact information online. But thank you for the time. If you guys have any questions, I guess.
Is there any questions for Mr. Dees? Well, it sounds exciting, 100th year anniversary and expanding to Two Rivers Park. Would staff, does staff have any comments to make about the, how that would work at the park?
Working, sorry, we've already met, I actually met with them about four months ago. We've been consistently keeping an open dialogue between us on the venue, the vision, the plan. We've walked the site, they've got a map of what the intent is. Of course, it has to go down through all the department heads, and as things come up, we can address those issues as they arise. And based on the feedback that I got from the staff that I've met with, with fire and sheriffs, they all feel pretty, you know, confident that it can be a big success. There's obviously, you know, like traffic, there's specifics that need to get worked out and fine-tuned, but this way, the sooner that we plan and tackle it in advance, the better off it'll be in the end as well. So, right now, it's kind of just blowing its way through each town.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next speaker is Mr. John Scholes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, certainly members of the council, mayor. I'm John Scholes. I reside in 981 Fiddle Drive, Fillmore, California. I'm here to, on the ongoing issue of allowing public access to the all-weather track. This is a process that started over probably about three and a half years to the end of the summer of 2008. We've had lengthy discussions with the school board, city staff, city council. The school board has agreed to allow us to construct, allow the construction of a gate at a location that would be acceptable to those members of, those members that would like to use, those members of our community that would like to use the all-weather track. What we're, the final issue is financing of the gate. We are requesting those members that support public access to the gate, certainly myself and other members of public access to the track, certainly those members that, those individuals that I've discussed with, would like to see the city go forward and finance the construction of the gate. The city would be reimbursed with, by the individuals who use the gate, who would pay annual fees through parks and recs. And now, I've become aware that there are civic groups in the community, certainly Fillmore Sunrise Rotary Club, which I'm a member of, that would help in the financing of this. We would like to look at this in conjunction with, we would like you as a council to look at this in conjunction with your other projects that benefit the citizens, the community, certainly in the health, safety, fitness, and wellness areas, such as your, the use of the swimming pool. I understand that is open to lap swimmers and other individuals. You spend money on this. I'm not familiar or know that I have a great composure. I don't have a lot of information on the details of how it's financed, how much money is spent, how much money is brought in, but I think, I think that's a good project. I think that should be part of the city, the city responsibility in conjunction with access to the all-weather track. I think it's something you could do, the community, the city could do both of these projects, and I think it'd be a great benefit to the community and the citizens who are interested in wellness and fitness. Again, this has been a long process. It's been a three and a half year process, so we're going to look to the council to ultimately solve this problem. This, I think, is consistent with what a republic stands for. We elected legislators to accomplish a task. As individuals, we cannot accomplish it. It has to be done through the governmental authority. I think this would be consistent with the objectives of the school board. My impression of the school board after the last three and a half years is they feel more comfortable working with another governmental entity, the city of Fillmore in this case, as opposed to private individuals. So, again, I am requesting, and other members that are in my position are requesting, you finance the gate. I think it's approximately $8,000. This would be reimbursed by the fees, the annual fees that we would pay through parks and recs, be part of this organization that allows us access to the track, and we would own or be able to use key cars through the gate, this electric gate, in conjunction with civic clubs who would help finance us. Again, I thank you for your attention. I hope you can act fairly.
Thanks, Mr. Scholes. As you know, the council supports access to the track, and always has. And although Mr. Gonzalez's news hasn't weighed in yet, but the rest of the council is supporting public access to the track. Unfortunately, we don't own the track, so what we think doesn't really matter. So, the issue right now has boiled down to funds for a gate, and, you know, at this point in time, we don't have the funds, we're limited on resources, we have layoffs, and, you know, at the end of the RDA, we might have some other financial issues to deal with. The pool isn't open right now, and we don't know what that's going to look like, and if it does open up next, I guess it's scheduled to open, but I don't know how that's gonna work out. So, I think we're still committed to paying the 25 percent, once the other 75 percent is raised. And I, the last time I spoke with Mr., is she, is she there? They would like you guys to coordinate with Mr. Bush, and my thought was, perhaps, they would have a cheaper solution, maybe. I don't know.
Why does this group, councilman, mayor?
The school district.
The what?
The school superintendent. So, but anyway, I, without discussing it with the rest of the council, I don't think we're gonna have the resources right now to fund it. So, 100 percent.
Well, we would, we would, I don't, of course, I'm not your trade, I don't know what your bank account looks, but we would request that you finance it, and we would promptly reimburse it. I can't say this is gonna be in the form of a promissory note or legal currency, but I think there's enough enthusiasm to support it. In the last few days, I think we've signed unofficial, non-binding, we've had unofficial, non-binding petitions signed by individuals, probably somewhere between 130 and 150 individuals that would use the track. Whether they all use the track, I don't know. I think a substantial number would contribute to financing of the gate, in addition to civic clubs that are committed to this project. So, again, Mayor Washford, I request that you look at this as part of your, part of your duty as a legislator. Again, considering a primary factor, any legislative body or city council would be the health, safety, and wellness of its citizens. I think that should be a very high priority. I think you've exercised it with the school, with the swimming pool, as I think you should. I'm supportive of it, so this would be an extension. Thank you for your time.
Could I ask you another question, Mr. Gonzalez? What would the anticipated cost per individual use, given the game one time?
The initial contribution, which we've made several, two years ago, was $25 a year per person. Whether that would be, I don't think we could afford much more than $50 a person per year, but I think that in conjunction with the civic clubs, whether it's Fillmore Sunrise Rotary or other civic clubs, would, I think, reimburse the city, and it would do so, I would think, within a relatively short period of time. If somehow, in between now and a given time, the school board decides to use our facility, well, that would be great, but my experience with the school board hasn't been particularly good. If one of them has agreed to do it, that means we need at least two others, and that took three and a half years, so that's gonna take about 10 years. I'm 70 now, and I may not make it. I'd like to be at least 71 by the time I use the track again. Again, I think the school board, I, they're not here, but my belief is, their concern is liability and property. And through the parks and recs, there'd be insurance that the governor, probably named the school board, additional insured as to liability and property loss. Although I use that track as an adult since 1972, I don't remember anyone ever suing them because they tripped over a dirt clot or something, or, other than children, maybe committing acts of vandalism, only because it recently rained, and they took their bicycles out to kick up the mud, and they couldn't do that in this situation, because there was no mud to kick up, and bicycles wouldn't be allowed through the gate. I don't see the risk, but I'm trying to accommodate the cautious governmental entities involved.
I think Mr. Gonzalez has a question for you, Mr. Scholes.
Yes, just as a point of clarification, you said that the Sunrise's Rotary Club is willing to help. In what terms? I mean, they're willing to come up with $7,000 or?
We have members here of that club that will probably speak to that with more particularity, but it would be typical fundraisers. We do, we sell fireworks, we have a casino night, we have a 5K run, we have, those are three primary fundraisers. We would contribute some of that money to this particular enterprise.
And then, my other question is, it is your belief that from about 130, 150 people, will we use the track and pay for it?
No, I don't, I think some of those that sign the petition will. I have, I would not, I would be surprised if all of them would, that would stun. It's kind of like New Year's resolution plus exercise. Sometimes, they don't really make it to March.
Excuse me. Is Brown Act stuff, excuse me?
I would keep it to responding to statements made briefly by the speaker. Responding to their questions is probably the best way to do it.
We still have to comply with the Brown Act, so, thank you, Mr. Scholes.
Thank you for your time.
I have two more speakers on this. Is Ms. Archer, Perez Sanford, is this the same statements that?
No, I have different.
You have different statements? Okay. And could I ask that?
Yeah, I have one speaker.
You want me to, you want to go out of speakerphone? You want to talk on the other?
I don't have a speaker.
Oh, okay. And I just wonder, I forgot to mention, everybody, we do have a lot of speaker cards, and we have a long program tonight, so if you can keep your comments to three minutes or less, I'd appreciate it, if we could get, if we're going. So, do you want to speak again?
Yes. Believe me, I'm in the staff there, if I knew I was gonna be in the line of vision like this. Mayor Washford and council members. I'm here to, my name's Joan Archer. I've been a resident of Fillmore for over 20 years, own the home here for over 30 years. I'm here to address the issue of greater public access to the Fillmore High School track. Although this issue has had broad public support, including members of the city council, the issue has bounced back and forth between the school board and the city council for over three years without resolution, until recently, a few months ago, when the school board approved a public access gate, which they will install at an agreed-upon location after the city pays for it. The next move is up to the city, so the ball is in the court at the city now. I've been following this along with John Scholes for over a year, attending both public and private meetings to try to move this process along. I'm curious, how many people here in the audience, if I show hands, would like to see greater access for the public to the Fillmore High School track? Could I say show hands? Okay, thank you. I'm here representing approximately 150 citizens who signed a petition which reads, "I want the public to have greater access to the Fillmore High School track year-round, including evenings and weekends, when the track is not being used for school activities. I don't want public use restricted to only when the swimming pool is open," end quote. 67 of the approximately 150 people who signed this have resided in Fillmore 25 years or more. Collectively, we call on the city council to exercise due diligence to finally make this happen. We have two suggestions. One is that over a year ago, at a joint meeting of the city council and school board, a determination was made that an ad hoc committee would be formed to resolve issues impeding public access to the track. That committee has not functioned, as some of us who were present at that meeting understood it would. The city has agreed to pay 25 percent of the approximately $8,000 cost of the gate, and stated that private citizens must raise the remaining 75 percent. At last night's Parks and Recreation Commission meeting, Councilmember Conway agreed to hold regular meetings of an ad hoc committee and to include private citizens to achieve the goal of greater access to the track by sharing current and correct information, discussing ideas, and taking appropriate action, including fundraising. We hope this will happen, and look forward to working with Councilmember Conway and anyone in the community who wants to achieve this goal. The second item we want to bring up is that it was suggested the city advance the money for the gate to be repaid over time by annual use fees and other fundraising efforts. We were told the city could not afford to pay for the gate by means of, and so, I did public records request to find out about some of the recreation finances, and learned that, over the last three years, the aqua program has resulted in a deficit of about $385,000. Now, we all want a pool available for public use. However, the most effective use of limited dollars for year-round public health and fitness, as well as recreation needs, should be reevaluated in the light of the city's current financial situation. For example, no profit and loss analysis exists for the lap swim program, which an estimated 14 to 18 citizens participate annually. That's not my estimate, that's the estimate I was given by the city based on liability forms that have been signed. Although participants pay $4 per session, a pool manager and two lifeguards must be on duty at a combined rate of pay of $38 per hour. After learning what the revenue was that's been received from the lap school, excuse me, the lap swim program for the last three years, I then estimated the hours the pool was open during that time, based on the schedule I was given, and calculating the combined staff hourly rate of pay, I was able to determine that operation of the lap school, lap swim program has resulted in a deficit of at least $16,000 over the last three years. If the city cannot afford a one-time expense of about $8,000 for greater public access for the track program that more than 150 citizens on this petition say they would like to see, how can the city afford to operate a lap swim program for about 14 to 16 citizens that has already cost the city at least $16,000 and is scheduled to reopen next month, resulting in even greater expense to the city? The question is, is that the most effective use of public funds for health, fitness, and recreation? We believe that the city council are good people, and we appreciate the work that they do, and the many hours they spend addressing the very complex issues this city faces. This seems to be a lot easier than some of the problems they have to deal with. So, we believe the city council has the ability to achieve the goal of greater public access to the track. We hope the council will exercise due diligence to that effect, and we are ready and willing to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I think the school is, the pool is scheduled to open, but I don't know if that's gonna hold. I know with the RDA decision, with our sales tax issue, it's possible that the swim program, the lap swim program, it might not even continue, so just want you to be aware of that. Okay, and I have another speaker card on this issue, it was Perez Sanford. And again, I'm gonna have the time run, so please, respect and time.
You know about my talking? I'm a, I'm a rookie, I'm a runner. I'm getting back into my regular running, marathons. I have a sore neck and sore leg, so I'm trying to work into the marathon in March. And at this point, I've been getting used to running to, I'm a crazy lady that goes to Santa Paula on 126, because I have tried going out to a good enough brand, and I've been bitten four times by dogs so far. I've been harassed by men, drunk men, who veer their par, on the other side of the street, I was facing the street running, and they came right close to my leg with their yellow Volkswagen. So, I prefer to run on 126, it's easier, straight road, you know, it's a straight road, and it goes downhill most of the way, if you know that. So, I would propose doing something to help, Mr. Scholes. When I saw the paper, and that's what got to me after all this time, after three and a half years of seeing him, and I have all respect for you, sir. I'm also a General Justice Delicacy Prevention Commissioner in the county, and my heart goes to kids who want to stay out of trouble. We tell kids, "Don't do this, don't do that, stay out of this, stay out of that." And when they say, "Well, what do I do instead?" We say, "Well, I don't know, but don't do it." So, whenever anything costs over 150 bucks, they'll turn to drugs, they'll turn to gangs, especially young men, they are very competitive and physically, so they're gonna turn to the easiest thing, which is fighting, or doing something inappropriate. So, it's our job as adults to do something for them. Running is the easiest thing. We grow runners out here, okay? I remember once, I challenged a kid at the high school who hadn't passed a test, fighting proficiency, and I said, "So, next time, you're gonna go over with me to the LA Marathon, you hear me? I'm gonna sign you up." He was the first out of 15,000 runners, okay? So, we have good kids out here. We just need to give them a chance. That track out there is for our kids, our families, ourselves, to take care of ourselves. So, I would propose in one day, one event that usually pays off, but then is here and in other places, you can come up with the 8,000, that's minimal, up to 15, and that's doing a job of that. And that just works out, just like the Make-A-Wish thing, I gave them that idea, and they started doing that over the county, and I think they raised 9,000 in one day. So, just a thought, but I think it's up to us, please, to do what we need to do for our community, our adults, folks, the elderly, the young kids, certainly our teens that need to get out of trouble. certainly our teens that need to get out of trouble, and we need to offer a solution. Enough is enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Another speaker card is Cindy Black.
Good evening, my name is Cindy Black, I live at eleven eighty-six Oak Avenue. And I'm here on behalf of the Rotary Club Fillmore Sunriseers. And our club last week, our board of directors voted that our club take the lead in the community to raise funds for this gate. As Mr. Scholes said, he is a member, he's a charter member of our club. And he's our last charter member, we want to keep him around for a while. So, our idea is to not only do fundraising through our club, but to go to other service clubs, to ask them to join in on this. I have been waiting, well, the number keeps coming up, eight thousand dollars, but I also heard seven thousand one hundred dollars. So, when we get the number, the cost, the actual cost of what it's going to take to put the gate in, our club will make, you know, a commitment as to how much money we'll commit right away, and then also do other fundraisers for it. And the city has agreed, as Mayor Washburn said, that twenty-five percent, they would pay twenty-five percent for this gate. So, that is our goal, is to raise the funds. I think that we can do this, and I think we can do it quickly. The sooner we get it in, the better for the community, and I think everybody in our club is for public access to that track. So, that's our commitment, and just to start it off, I will personally make a hundred dollar donation to start my end of it. And I have a couple of other comments. John mentioned our casino night fundraiser, which is on Friday, April twenty-seventh, twenty-five dollar tickets, have a lot of fun there. We also have a five K run and walk on May nineteenth, and the ten K has just been added to that. So, we hope everybody would come out and support those two activities. And I only have one other comment, and this that is, I would dispute Ms. Archer's statistics about the number of lap swimmers, but that's for another time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Black. One other speaker on this item is Mr. Jack Steadman.
My name is Jack Steadman, eight six three Oliver. I'm just concerned about what happened to John. I don't know what the answer might be, I was just, and I missed part of the meeting and what you talked about, but I was just wondering if the school and the city somehow could get together for a gate, with a card gate or something like that. So, we just, I'm a walker, we walk down by the levee by the river, five days, six days a week. But if we had the school open, if you wanted to walk at night, that seems like it could be a safer place to do it. Thank you.
All right, I have, my next speaker is Ms. Jan Marvollin. Thanks for your patience.
Absolutely. We'll make a real quick, so we've got to put us on time there. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I'm Steve McKinnon, I'm the Boys and Girls Club, Santa Clara Valley, president of the board, and I'm here for a couple invitations and an introduction. The invitations are, we have a couple fundraisers coming up that we definitely would like to invite the council to, as well as any of the other members of the, the first one will be on February eighteenth, right after St. Valentine's Day, where we'll be having a Love Boat dinner and auction. And so, we have Community Center in Santa Paula on that Saturday evening. It's going to be a lot of fun, we have Gavin MacLeod, the captain of the Love Boat, he's our honorary chair, not sure if he's going to make it, looks like he has some other commitments, but he's very, very supportive of it. A lot of fun, if anybody's been at the Santa Paula Community Center, it's kind of a blind looking building, right Steve?
Yes.
But you'll be amazed at what it's going to look like that evening. And it will be a lot of fun, and obviously goes with good cause, the Boys and Girls Club, something that the council is very, very supportive of. A second fundraiser that we'll be having, a couple weeks after that, March third, we'll be doing our second great train robbery. And we're working in conjunction with Fillmore and Western, we did it last year, and it was wildly successful, an awful lot of fun. So much fun that we had to add another judge to the train. We have, we have two judges acting, issue arrest warrants, bail conditions, and actually this year, we're going to be granting divorces and weddings, all for price, of course. And we have two judges, and I can maybe invert Monica a little bit, Captain McGrath has agreed to be one of our judges, and we're going to be swearing her in for that night, she could be actually a blooded out McGrath tonight, and she'll be, she'll be helped out with Captain Tim Hagel, hang them high. Hagel will also be helping him out. It is a lot of fun, great train trip, excellent food, very western feel to it, we'll be having probably, a good chance we'll have a train robbery going along the way, and it's a lot of fun, and we'd encourage all of you to think about coming. My introduction comes, probably, you probably know our new director better than the board does, because obviously we've stolen our way after, what, thirty-seven years with Fillmore?
No, six and a half.
Oh, okay. In education, six and a half, in Fillmore. And we were able to steal our way from doing an exceptional job in the Fillmore school system, we've become our new director. Our former director just recently left after kind of helping us through some tough times, but we're very happy to say we're completely in the black, and our programs are getting more active, we're getting more kids in the club, both in Fillmore and in Santa Paula, and this is a perfect next step that we see. And to have our new director on board, I just wanted to be able to introduce you to her, for those who don't know her already, and maybe I'll just say a few words about where we're going from here. Jan Marvollin.
Hi, I just wanted to take this opportunity, most of you knew me as the principal at San Caitano for the past six and a half years, and I retired from there in December, and very excited to take this one time opportunity to stay in Fillmore, to be able to work with the kids of Fillmore and Santa Paula as the CEO of the Boys and Girls Club of Santa Clara Valley. I'm very excited, I've been working with both clubs now for a week and a half, and I'm excited to bring some of the same innovative programs that we had here at San Caitano into both of these clubs. And so, I just wanted to say hi and introduce myself, so thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Glad to have you.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Ms. Black. And I would recommend the great train robbery, I've done it myself, and nothing more exciting than getting put in jail. Somebody has to bond you out. Okay. Mr. Alex Molapoy.
Good evening. My first comment is actually going backwards to the first part of the meeting, which is considered the Fillmore City Council's special meeting agenda. I arrived, I think, three minutes too late to make a public comment on the closed session. I think it would be best if the city would resolve the issue with pure vagueness, and this, I believe, would avoid additional costs. I think the longer it goes on, the more it's going to cost us, so I would, I would like to see that resolved forthwith. Thank you. As far as public comments on the track use, I think three and a half years is very irresponsible of this council to let this issue continue. I would bet to think that we have already spent over eight thousand dollars in time and energy on this issue, which we could have just written a check to pay for the gate. That's my feelings on the track issue. And pretty much that's it, except for I do have some questions regarding the joint consent calendar, which is later on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make a comment. City manager, do you want to comment on the cost of the every case which is in other hands than our, than our own?
I'm not really sure what you're referring to. Part of it is there are two separate cases. One is being handled by the J P I A, to which the, it's a joint powers authority, and we're a member of that. The city pays kids for that case, and it's, I, here, the charges from the joint powers organization, then there's, and that's a civil case, and then there's an administrative case for which the city can take directly. And that's also, these two cases are going on, so I think.
Thank you. We're doing what we can to get them solved. And then as far as the track, and taking three years, that's correct, but I don't think the, and you're right about all the staff time that's gone in to try to resolve this, unfortunately, again, we don't own the track, so we are not in complete control of what happens. But, okay, is there, that's all this speaker card, oh, Mr. Ron McDonald?
He was going to speak on item five B, I missed.
Okay, thank you. Five B?
Yes.
That's all the public comment speaker cards I have. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on an item that's not on the agenda? Anything? Random comments, praise?
Yeah, we can grant them.
Okay, so, we're going to move on then to our next item, which is, we have some public hearings, and the first one, the first one is information and discussion concerning watershed protection district levy improvement and levies by our watershed protection staff.
Thank you very much. Just for the record, my name is Norma Camacho, I'm director of the Watership Protection District of the Public Works Agency in Ventura County, and here would be today is Peter Shading, who is the deputy director of our design and construction unit, and he is passing out some summaries for the Sespe Creek Levy Rehabilitation Project that we're currently working on for the city. And so, basically, we brought a few handouts, one Peter is passing out, and two others, information on living behind the levee and precautions we should be taking, and also flood preparation for your neighborhood. And so, those are two things that we have available on the table there for your taking and distribution. And so, just in summary, what we wanted to talk about is basically what this project is about, the public feedback we receive on the project, where we're at as far as schedule goes, and essentially, what are our next steps in moving forward with rehabilitation? And basically, what this project is primarily about is to correct the identified deficiencies of the levee. The main deficiency is the lack of preboard, and that is, the levee essentially just needs to be higher. Per FEMA certification standards, it needs to be three feet higher than the hundred-year water surface elevation level. And so, that's what we're trying to achieve through this project. We're also going to be correcting other deficiencies we have identified with the core engineers, some concerning inappropriate, basically, vegetation that's located along the levee, as well as deteriorating rock, and also, we do have uncommitted encroachments in the levee areas. And so, those are things that we're going to try to work through at this point in time. And again, our primary goal is to essentially remove the existing flood hazards, making the community safe, and essentially removing all of those parcels that you see covered in white blue in the corner there, out of the special flood hazards zone. And what that will do for those affected individuals and property owners is essentially to remove the effect of having mandatory insurance imposed on them to buy their levers, and so that's our goal. Basically, in short, we just, our staff has done extensive, very rigorous analysis of a lot of alternatives and options. We looked at both structural and non-structural options. And basically, after all the analysis, we have felt that the most cost-effective way of essentially rectifying the levee is to raise the levee. And so, we had two different ways of constructing or raising the levee. One is to build a retaining wall, which is detailed in the summer report, or to put additional amount of earth and fill on top of the levee to raise it. There are pros and cons associated with both of those methodologies of putting additional fill, but essentially during the construction phase, increase traffic and the need for additional trucks, has a larger footprint, so it would require additional property acquisitions and encroachments to existing residential properties. Placing a retaining wall on the land side to raise the levee could attract more graffiti. Some of the pros of this option is that it creates a smaller footprint and there's more expertise to construct. But then again, there's also the issue of safety issues, public safety issues of having a higher wall up to one, up to six feet in some areas of the levee structure. So, what we did is we coordinated a public meeting on Thursday, January nineteenth, at the Faith Community Church, and I'd like to really thank Mark Ray for allowing us to use the meeting facility there at the Community Church. Approximately twenty-eight affected residents came and provided feedback on the two alternatives that we have hanging up there on the sidewall there. Those red dots indicate the preferences of the community, but what I'm going to do right now is just to provide a brief synopsis of the feedback we received. The first alternative, alternative two, basically looks at installing about nine hundred feet of retaining wall with about six hundred feet of earth and fill. And alternative seven, the far alternative that seems to have more red dots on it, proposed three hundred feet of retaining wall and about twelve hundred feet of earth and fill. The feedback we received from the community, the affected property owners really wanted to minimize the amount of retaining wall, therefore reducing the amount of graffiti potential, and basically wanted to maximize the earth fill method whenever it was possible. One of the things that we discussed with the community was that, continued figuring out that the channel is really not a feasible or sustainable alternative, and that we needed to redesign or heighten the levee to create a very passive safety measure for the commercial levy certification in a timely manner. The other issue that came out of it is that the community really needed the assurance that the construction of this project is going to indeed get all of the affected communities out of the special flood hazard zone. And so, that was a huge concern. They also wanted to minimize encroachments that this project imposed on residential properties, as well as, they had very much, very, very, a lot of concerns on this construction project affecting their existing use sheds. And so, that was some of the feedback that we did receive. And alternative seven wants to refer alternative construction cost for that alternative range of about one point five million dollars, just for construction alone. It does affect the Faith Community Church, it does encourage onto their property, but they've been very cooperative and working with us, and are really moving forward to craft some type of deal to essentially allow for this encroachment to recur. And discussing, uh... And discussing the project schedule, we are completing, we have completed all the planning and field studies, we're actually wrapping up on preliminary engineering, and we're going to be moving forward on the environmental document. And that schedule is outlined or have been passed out to many people here today. And so, finalizing the design, we will also need to alter plans and specs as part of this. That is anticipated to be completed in winter of 2012. We also need to go back to the Corps of Engineers to get permissions to actually modify the levee at this point, since it was originally a core-built levee. And so, those modifications or permits anticipate, are anticipating to be completed and through the process by fall of 2013. And so, we expect to move forward then to bid the project and then to complete construction by early 2014. And so, those are our target dates right now. As far as funding goes, we have applied for Department of Water Resources Local Levy Assistance Program Grant specifically for this project. We're applying for approximately $2.8 million from that grant, and so, we're hopeful that we're going to be successful, but we will get more come March of this particular year. And we've also, our Board of Supervisors for our five-year capital plan has also identified approximately $5.9 million of watershed protection district funding specifically for this project. And so, basically, that's the project in a nutshell. And in the interim, we are going to be identifying or working on some of the other deficiencies that were identified in the core report, and Peter Shade is going to discuss about those impacts as we're going to be starting that construction project in March of 2012.
I have a question before.
Please.
So, my understanding is this is going to be hybrid. We're going to have some earthen and some retaining?
That's right.
Okay, and you'll determine what's more feasible, what's, will be, have you already determined that through these drawings?
Well, what we're going to be doing is when we go through the environmental document, they, we're going to be looking at those alternatives more closely to identify the specific impacts. And so, yeah. But right now, we're just getting some community feedback on what the preferences were, what's important to people, and incorporate it then to our design alternatives analysis.
My other question is, at what point does FEMA come along and say, yes, or no? You know, you don't want to build something and then they say, oh, it's a slip.
Yeah. Once we do have construction drawings in the, let's say, I would say the 90% level, we usually apply for a little more, a letter of natural revision to FEMA, and then we'll get some type of indication from them as we move forward towards a bid process of whether or not they would accept the project. So, that processes them concurrently. We will get some feedback, and hopefully, once construction is complete, we then go back to FEMA to demonstrate that we have built the project to our plans and specifications, and they will typically come back with approval, a letter of natural revision.
But they have a preapproval process?
Yes.
One quick question. The scour line of the toe of the existing levee is sufficient for the hybrid repairs?
Yes, we've done extensive hydraulic analysis to ascertain.
Okay, to be clear, in this document handed out, we are talking about alternative number seven?
Yes.
The last one on the list?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Camacho, I have one question, just curiosity. What was the cost of alternative number two?
Alternative number two is approximately, let's say, 1.4 million.
So, it's in the same range?
It's in the same range. It's very close between alternative two and seven in terms of cost.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Shade?
Mayor Washburn, council members, and director, my name is Peter Shade. As Norma indicated, I'm the deputy director of Design and Construction Division. My division is in charge of most, if not all, of the capital improvement projects, and so through my division, help from other divisions, we carry out those projects through planning, design, CQ, construction, and then final turnover to our own end division. The project in front of you, the levee, Sespe Creek Levee, was built in the mid-'80s by the Corps of Engineers as a response to flooding historically, and specifically the 1978 flood that caused significant flooding in Fillmore. Because it was designed and constructed as a federal project, the Corps has certain responsibilities to come and take a look at the facility from time to time. And most recently, in 2011, they give what they call a periodic inspection report that Norma indicated, found certain deficiencies in the project that they were concerned about. And those ranged from acceptable to minimally acceptable to unacceptable. One of the areas that they found unacceptable in a few locations were the rock that was out there. And that was an issue that does stem back to original construction, where there was some compromise in some of the rock material that was placed on the slope. And through that periodic inspection report, they identified three reaches that needed to be addressed that were found unacceptable. And in front of you, the small exhibit, we're showing those three areas. For reference, the convention that the district uses for Sespe Creek 1 is that reach from Highway 126 to Old Creek Road, and Sespe, I'm sorry, Sespe Creek 1 is from Old Telegraph Road to Goodenough Road, and Sespe 2 is that from the State Highway 126 to Old Telegraph Road. Each of these reaches has areas that need to be addressed, and they were, they were both identified in that periodic inspection report. And so, as a first step to get this project moving in the field, what we're planning doing, and we currently have a project out to bid that's valued at about $300,000, is to go and fix that rock immediately. That's not something that we need to wait for to finalize the construction plans, to raise the levee, and from the Corps standpoint, it is considered maintenance. So, we've conferred with them, we've designed the work based on the results of the inspection report, and we have this drawn. Now, as, as some of you probably know, this also is the area that the city has a trail system in front of the levee that was installed a few years ago by permit from the district. This is, the trail is on a district property. And typically with these, with these kind of projects, in our permit, we put requirements that if the district for any reason has to come in and do remediation of the facility, that it's incumbent on the permitee to pay for removal, replacement of those elements that need to be disturbed to do that work. We met with Yvonne, the city manager, and, and she indicated that the city is not in a position at this point to be able to pay for so, some of those disruptions to the system. And we acknowledge that we may be looking to the city to help us with right-of-way issues along parklands that are along the levee, and that what we have suggested at this point is that the district goes ahead and pays for the removal and replacement of the trail that's disturbed by these activities, as well as remove or replace the irrigation system that would be impacted by, by the project. The project will need to remove 14 trees that were planted by the city as far as part of the trail system. They range from approximately two to seven-inch diameter trees, so they are fairly young trees. And what our plan is, is to go ahead, again, restore the trail pavement and the irrigation system to where it is to now, and then at the point at which the city is in a position where they're able to replace the trees, then the system would be in place to go ahead and do that, and set those trees under the permit we have of the city. The project is, as I said, it currently has to bid, we're scheduled to go to the board on February 7th for preapproval of that contract amount, and if all goes to plan, we expect to be out there right around the beginning of March to do this work. It will take from 30 to 45 days. While the work is going on, we will have, we'll, we'll call the trail closed, but we will have earthen detours around the work area, so those that, that use the trail on a daily basis for their recreation and daily regimes will have the ability to continue to walk around the work area. Contractor will be required to, to maintain that system open and to convince the public as much as possible. And that is indicated in a light green square here on the second line of the schedule as, as work that, that we'll be doing, we will be doing concurrently with, with moving through the design process. And I think that's all I had to offer, so if there's any questions I can answer them about the, about this rock, rehabilitation.
Council, any questions for Mr. Shade?
I just want to say on behalf of the city, thank you. On behalf of those homeowners especially, and everyone on that side of the city, we really appreciate the fact that you're taking our plight seriously, and Watershed has really stepped up. Thank you very much.
I do have a speaker card on this item, Mr. Alex Mulcoy, who will ask a question of the county staff.
Good evening. I'm not sure who the question goes to, but I was approached today by several, about three people, that had seen this item on the agenda, and they all three live in the Barstail area. And they were asking me what would be the beneficial or detrimental effects to them on this project. I'm not sure who can answer that.
I think it's Camacho.
It would have to be Watershed to answer that. I think you're referring to the Barstail area on Santa Clara River, is that correct?
Yes, south of...
Yes, um, yeah, let me, let me maybe shed a little more light on that. Periodically, that area, the Santa Clara River floods to the south through Barstail, and I think that's what their concern was, was maybe that this project might add to that, or if it would maybe alleviate some of that problem.
We wouldn't have expected any impact to the Barstail area from this project. This project, although, is near the confluence of the Santa Clara River, they work as independent systems, and I don't, I wouldn't see, anticipate any change to benefit them or to their detriment from this project. Thank you.
Mr. McDonald has a question.
Yes, I'm Rod McDonald. I represent a partnership that owns about 35 acres.
Mr. McDonald, could you go up to the microphone so they can get you on tape for the record?
Now, my name is Rod McDonald. I represent a partnership that owns about 35 acres of industrial land that is south of the 126 in the Fillmore Industrial Park. And I'm concerned about how this may affect the description of how a property is described on the FEMA maps.
How would we do better for you?
Relative to the improvements. I'm not, I don't understand how it's going to affect us. There has been a long-term concern, because some of you have been in the capital for more than a few years, about FEMA's concern about the levees upstream of Fillmore and the business park. So, I am concerned about how these improvements are going to affect the viability of our industrial issues south of 126.
Well, these, it definitely addresses the FEMA issues, but maybe you guys can address something as far as the Sespe levee south of, south of 126.
Now, there are levee systems that are, were built by the city, that being the levee that's south of 126 along the Sespe, and I believe that wraps around into the Santa Clara River. This project will mitigate the breakout, if you will, along Sespe Creek that, that from the map that's, that's behind the council members here, you can see that encompasses that whole area, including the business park. The, the, the levees that the city owns along the business park and around the West Clark Tree Plant are obviously what would protect those parcels from the Santa Clara River. So, this project will mitigate from water breaking out of Sespe Creek and then, and then flowing over 126 itself. Does that answer your question?
I, I would only follow up by saying, how is this going to affect the FEMA maps as it relates to the property once it's completed? Because part of the success of the Fillmore Business Park is included or...
Be it with the floodplain?
Wrapped up in the fact that this has to be out of floodplain, and we don't have issues with water coming from the upper parts of the Sespe Creek down into the business park. So, I'm, again, I'm just a simple guy, I don't understand exactly, I'm happy that this is happening, but I'm hoping that it will create an issue that has gone away with regard to our business park.
I would hope so too. Would it be addressed in the letter of map revision?
Yes, it would.
Yes.
So, when they complete their project, I guess FEMA will come in and do a revision of the map?
Yes.
And that will give us the information that you're seeking. I would expect it to improve, but, you know...
If that's true, that's very good, because a lot of people don't understand that the issues upstream of Fillmore affect those of us that are downstream in the business park. So, hopefully, that will resolve that issue.
I think so.
You know, only FEMA knows for sure.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Mayor, I just wanted, and people that are present, I just want to thank Norma and her staff. I'll tell you, I met with them over a year ago about the levee issue. The first time I met with them, they were telling us that the citizens of Fillmore were going to have to pay an assessment in order to have these improvements. I just met with them a couple of months ago, and they had, I really appreciate what they did, because that's no longer the case. They are not asking the citizens of Fillmore to pay those assessments. And when I talked to them about us being tapped out to even fix the bicycle path, again, they stepped up. They went the extra mile to meet with the residents along the canal and have public meetings in the area so people could attend them, and they're here now. So, really, the, the district has gone above and beyond the call of duty, and I am very grateful to them.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming out tonight and last week. We very appreciate it.
Did we get your names in there?
I think we'll take a short break while we regroup here.
You got to go to that one.
We'll be right back, okay?
We're taking a break.
Bye. We're going to continue with our council meeting, and we're going to move on to item 5B. And this is information, discussion, and possible direction staff concerning economic development of the track infrastructure. And we have Mr. Bruce Stansley, Prime Economic Development Corporation, collaboration. Can you give us a presentation?
Very great. Good evening, Mayor Washburn, members of council, staff, and others in the audience here. My name is Bruce Stansley. I'm the president of the Economic Development Collaboration for Ventura County. We're a public-private partnership. City has been a great partner to us. Fillmore and Western is a great partner to us. We try to bring together public and private partners to figure out what we can do to invest in business opportunities in Ventura County. I'd like to really focus on two or three comments and some brief remarks here. First is to commend you for organizing the meeting in a town hall format to, to look at strategies of... a town hall format to look at strategies, opportunities, ideas, contributions to investing in business opportunities for the city. That's just fantastic. My two cents comments are really around, one, a little bit, just, excuse me if it gets to be a little bit preachy, but sort of strategy on economic development, very brief, and couple of points and tactics. And the strategy comment would really be this. There are only three or four things fundamentally that any region, or any group, or any city can do in economic development practice, and those three, actually four things are, you can work, of course, to retain and grow your existing business base. That's probably the most important thing that you can do, is grow and retain what you already have. Second, you can look to attract business in the Fillmore Business Park. It's a fantastic resource and potential opportunity for bringing and attracting new business to town. The business attraction effort, of course, in California is very difficult, because we compete with low-cost folks elsewhere across the country. And what we feature in Ventura County is quality of life, skilled labor, skilled workforce, and really great opportunities in towns like Fillmore. So you can attract, or you can retain and grow your business, you can attract business. And the third key thing you can do is work on accelerating entrepreneurship. Find folks, small business owners, entrepreneurs who are looking to create a business, and network them to the resources and accelerate their opportunities or leverage to create new jobs. The fourth, it's one that I don't deal with personally, but that's really sort of screaming at Sacramento and the rest of the government outside the region about creating or allowing a better business climate. You may want to work on that, that's not my venue specifically. But, and not to be overly pithy about this, those are really the only levers that you have. With that as a context, and thinking about how you want to move ahead and what you can do in economic development strategy, I would offer that as a partner to you, the Economic Collaborative and our Small Business Development Center, we do two or three things that we'd really like to accentuate and elevate in service with you. Some of them are referenced on some materials that we'll leave behind here, and we can hand them out. But the first is, we do operate a small business development center. We have a team of about 25 professional business consultants and advisors. They are available by referral to any business in this region, in Ventura County, in the city of Fillmore specifically. They are professional, they are confidential, they are no cost, and they have the resources to understand that they don't know any businesses better than the business knows it, rather that they have some arms length, this and some objectivity, some experience and awareness of other resources, that they may help a business owner become familiar with and help them look at anything from access to capital, to managing their finances, to improving their marketing strategy, to improving customer service, any of those sorts of things. Another thing that we do is we make small business loans, and we have some excellent capital available now. We can make loans to businesses for as small as $5,000. We'll make loans in some circumstances up to a quarter million. Our general lending tends to be more around $25,000 to $50,000. We are lending at about 6%. We are not a bank. We look at criteria that are more liberal than commercial credit financing. Nevertheless, we are looking to get repaid so we can use that money to be reinvested back in additional businesses as loans are paid. But I would encourage you to share with businesses in your community, and we can work with you on means to make sure that people are aware of there is, there are opportunities in access to capital, which is one of the real barriers to doing business in Ventura County today. In addition to that, lastly, we have the resources with that core of consultants and others to work with you and identify what are the demand opportunities, what is the demand. My businesses in Fillmore put on workshops, seminars. So on one hand, we can do small business one-on-one direct consulting. On another hand, we can partner with the Chamber and the city to create workshops on any kind of topic, where we can also network additional business-to-business sort of sharing of information. We can bring banks to the table for them to talk about commercial credit opportunities. However, we can work with the city to make sure that we are bringing to you the resources that are available. Those are no cost to the city and no cost to the business. We have the resources to bring to the table, and we'd be thrilled to be a partner with you moving ahead. So again, I commend you on looking at economic development and what you might do, and I'd be happy to answer your question.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Stansley?
Perhaps you could kind of put some folks in briefly about some of the workshops you already have had, and quite successful.
The last set of concentrated workshops I think we did here in Fillmore were around three different topics. I couldn't try and remember them off the top of my head. One was focused very specifically on marketing messaging strategies for any business, figuring out how one takes advantage of low-cost opportunities. We've augmented that more recently in the fast-moving world of social media, through making sure that we've got resources and professional systems to pop the business about how they can better use not only a website, but whether it's other email, or Twitter, or Facebook, or those kinds of LinkedIn resources. We've done workshops specifically on access to capital on two areas. There are, one is sort of financial management, so your finances are in order, a business understands where its cash flow is, and maybe it's actually got money in its accounts that it doesn't quite realize, or it can be just putting the finances together to be competitive in accessing capital. And I should have probably started with the third one, which is sort of the predecessor, precursor to all of those, which is developing a business plan to begin with. So many people who've got a great idea to go into business, and the economy's good, you take it out and you go running, and you've got clients or customers, or buyers, or whatever it is, and as things get a little more constricted, and as the business grows, there's a whole lot of business planning. It doesn't have to be overly complicated and a big fancy document, but there are about a half a dozen key considerations that we help a business try to understand. Who are its customers? Does it understand its product, or does it rather understand its competition in the region and its opportunities for growth and those kinds of things? Beyond that, we can customize workshops for industry-specific issues. We've done some work recently, for example, in the city of Ventura with restaurants specifically, and other sort of service and hospitality industry or service programs. So we can, we'd be happy to try and identify whatever strategy and whatever kind of community or market businesses that we could put something together. We work with Chambers very carefully and closely throughout the region. We'd be happy to work not only with the city, but Chambers as well.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Stansley.
Thank you.
Pardon me. Okay. Speaking in terms of, we're so, I believe EDBC was active in helping a small business in town such as Memstar?
Yes, indeed.
Retrieve a grant, I believe.
A made a loan to Memstar. It's been very successful, and we did well, and we're thrilled to have been a partner to them, yes.
Can you briefly just explain the process for any interested individuals that may have an interest in this type of program?
Sure. Yes. First, contact us, 384-1800. We'll get you into our little switchboard and/or our website, edbc-bc.com, and the materials I'll leave behind are contact information. Our first step when we get a call from a business is usually within 24 to 48 hours, we'll put the business in touch, either at their location or ours, whichever works best. On the first meeting, we'd like the business to come to us to make sure the business owner gets out of their shop, so that we've got their uninvited attention, because if they stay in their operation, business continues, and it's very difficult. What we try to do in the first hour of a meeting is to do an assessment of what are the issues the business is facing, understand the industry that it's in, understand its current circumstance and condition. If it's access to capital, that is truly the issue that's needed there. We have two or three different professionals who will work with the person, and making sure that we've got a clean display of financials. We're looking for at least three years of prior year financials. We'll make sure that we are not just saying go forth and do that and bring it. We'll make sure that we're working with the business and CPA or accountant. If it's a startup business, we're looking, well, in addition to three years prior, if it's a startup, we'll work with what we've got, and we'll help the business put together at least three years of sort of projected, anticipated growth, so we understand where the cash comes from and funding the loans. But we really try not to be, the difference between us and a bank is a bank will say, look, you come to us, and we'll try and assess whether or not you think you have the wherewithal and the business revenue to pay off. We want to be a partner with the business to make sure that we are understanding and supporting business planning in a way that we have confidence in making that investment. So it's really customized and interactive. If the business has two or three different things going on, I should say this, we try to organize ourselves around a specific scope of work. So it's not really our interest to be a long-term mentor, which is chat with the business about strategy and ideas, and to try and narrow quickly down to what is the issue that you need to get beyond to accelerate your profitability, or your stability, or your new hire, or whatever that goal is. Set that as a scope of work, and work on getting that achieved, and then maybe do several scopes of work. But we will work directly on hand in very close quarters with any business that we'd be interested in. The most important issue for us is getting our foot in the door with the business, because small business owners are so busy managing six and 10 different responsibilities, as we know, that it's very difficult to get away and get attention. And so referrals and word of mouth, and strong recommendations from partners like yours are the most, and only sure way for us to get on track in the business.
Thank you.
Did you have a question, Mr. McDonald?
I just wanted to reinforce, reinforce the fact that in Fillmore, we are competing with Los Angeles County businesses, and we really need to focus on Ventura County and bringing new businesses to Ventura County. That's the big issue, as I will hopefully be able to speak later. Our market, in terms of industrial users and manufacturing users, is Valencia and Santa Clarita, which is in Los Angeles County. And we really need to all focus on being able to compete with that market. Ventura County is a different market, and we need to establish Ventura County as a viable manufacturing and industrial market. So I'm hoping that your emphasis will be along those lines, because that, that is our challenge. Fillmore particularly is an, is an unestablished industrial manufacturing market. We spent a lot of time, we spent seven years developing our business park and creating all of the environmental issues required to create the business environment so that we can create jobs and industrial users in Ventura County. And we have got to focus on competing with that market. And I'm hoping that we can be with you and join with you in creating those opportunities.
Three quick comments. I know we're getting them a long way in. First, I absolutely agree. The problem in Ventura County is we've lost some, we're still down 21,000 jobs since the start of the recession at the end of 2007, and retaining the existing job base isn't enough. Attracting business is true. We think from regional economic development standpoint, that the business park in Fillmore has extraordinary potential. Simply, as sooner or later, people over in Valencia will realize that coming to Fillmore puts them twice as close to the ocean, or half of them closer to the ocean, however you put that, and offers amenities in a small-town environment that are impossible to beat.
For less money.
For less money. In terms of manufacturing, my last comment at the moment, I hope, is we agree with you 100%. One of the untold stories that we've just been starting to work on in Ventura County is that actually Ventura County is one of the manufacturing leaders in the state of California and the nation. That may sound astounding to several, but let me just follow the following. Ventura County has, as a percent of its labor force, approximately almost 14% of our private sector business, or private sector jobs in Ventura County are in manufacturing. Statewide average is 11%, the national average is 11%. Recent data published by the Milken Institute shows that Ventura County is one of the strongest, most diverse high-tech industry areas in the United States, up and down the 101 corridor. There's no reason in the world with that kind of base that it can't reach into the neighborhoods of Fillmore, especially because we're sitting midpoint between a huge industrial base in the Santa Clarita area and up and down the 101 corridor. Lastly, I think I was going to say last one already, but my last class, is we recognize that going into the Los Angeles market is in fact the low-hanging fruit for business expansion and growth in Ventura County. We know that we're not going to go to Nevada and Texas and mid-America and get people to move their businesses to the higher cost of California. But when businesses are already doing business in Los Angeles, we've done the research, we know that we offer extraordinarily high quality of life, a lower-cost proposition, and we think every bit the quality of labor and opportunity. And we're looking to recapitalize the campaign to get messaging back into Los Angeles, and we agree, we think the targeting is less down in the LA basin than it is up from Chatsworth through the Santa Clarita area. And to a certain degree, we've been picking off businesses that have been growing up in the southern San Joaquin Valley. So we think there's some real opportunities.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Thanks for coming and giving a great presentation. I would like to see some workshops.
Tricky move. We're getting good. Mayor and council and presidents, I'd like to thank Bruce, because I'll tell you, I didn't even have to ask him, and he was, as soon as he found out we were having the workshop, he was on the email asking to come and make a presentation, and that demonstrates his concern, and I really appreciate that, and wanting to get the word out.
Thank you.
And I also want to mention too, the EDC BC also has a section devoted to filming in Ventura County. They have a website called Ventura County Film Commission or something like that. Is that the name of it? Did you, we have a film, one of our film commissioners is here, if you'd like to talk about that a little bit.
Sure. A quieter kept piece of our operations and services we deserve is the Ventura County Film Commission, a role that we've played fairly low-key that we've just begun to accelerate. We haven't made a formal launch, but I'm happy to announce it here. We have just put together a new website. It's VenturaCountyFilm411.com, and I'll make sure we get that information out through the city. We haven't done any broad press releases on it. What we're specifically looking to do with that website is create a resource directory for individuals and businesses in Ventura County who are in the business of the film industry. Maybe somebody who owns a property that they would like to make available to film production crews is available to do shoots. It could be somebody that's a vendor in any number of different services. It could be lighting specialists, you name it. There are thousands of people in Ventura County who are involved in the film industry and who commute to Los Angeles every day. We could keep them locally employed, off the highway, and build an industry that we think we have an opportunity to expand from the Los Angeles basin. You in Fillmore know some of the barriers to getting film out here, and what some of the complications of that are. But the film industry is growing actually quite robustly, if that's the right word, in the Los Angeles basin, and that runaway production has come back, and there's some real opportunities. So we know that there are lots of film professionals in Ventura County. Through this Ventura County Film 411 directory, we want to be able to document what that critical mass is, and then once we demonstrate that critical mass, develop stronger messaging points to attract more film and retain film opportunities and jobs in Ventura County. It's a great clean industry. Fillmore and Western Railway is sort of a Fillmore Arts heart and soul, and you will be the leader of film opportunity in Ventura County for a long period.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. Anybody else who wants to speak on economic development? I do have some speaker cards, but then just for any general comments. I did have, since it does say discussion and possible direction of staff, I did want to request that we, I know Kevin Sweeney had brought several months ago some suggestions for streamlining the process of getting businesses going, getting more, more of our storefronts filled up. I'd like to see that come back at some point in the near future for more discussion. We do have the 30% retail requirement in front of our Central Avenue downtown area. We've got a lot of empty buildings that I'd like to consider revising that, making some changes, and also just the process. I mean, the... And also just the process, I mean, the daycare scenario, that's been a long process. It shouldn't take that long, so I don't know if we have to hold somebody's hand to walk through it, or what we could do, but I want to make that process faster. For an entrepreneur, somebody who's bootstrapping themselves up, they don't have the cash flow to carry them for six months or a year, how we're going to run that process. So that's just where I'm coming from, and I'd like to work with that.
Also, the tag team that, I think, we should also look at the, maybe possibly some revisions to off-the-highway in regards to signage. There's new, a good example is the Fillmore Grove. They cannot have a sign that is basically lit and up in the air where people can see it. There is a business there that has expresses opinion that, you know, when people are driving by, they can't see. And they would like to have some signage, some visual effects out there so people know where they're at. They're paying high-dollar rent, so I think it's something that we may want to entertain.
Who is this?
Fillmore Grove.
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 All right.
So are you putting that into a formal, what, future?
It's just direction the staff to.
Okay, the tag team is what Mayor Washburn, what it's expressing. And, you know, we're talking about, you know, the common complaint that I hear is that there's too many bureaucratic directives, and new businesses come into Fillmore. And we need to be less stringent on rules. And there's a few ordinances that I think should be amended.
So are we going to look specifically at the streamline suggestions? I mean, we could say this, and you just give it to staff, and we might see this again for five months or now. Or I'll say, okay, we would like in the future, in the next two months, currently, since he's already come up with some ideas, the streamlining, so there's all, there's already something on paper?
Correct, there's something on paper. If this can be an addition to it, that would be great. Just a thought, it's not something that we have to cement into our future agendas. It's just a thought that perhaps we can help these business owners who have spent a lot of time and money, and also helping the future residents cut that one up, you know, engage in business with them.
You're talking about signage?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm certainly in agreement with the signage, to look at it. And I'm also in agreement to look at the streamlined suggestions on the area that happen. And so we want to look at that, maybe with a step, and give us a suggestion of a timing with that, because I know we have a budget to make, so maybe they can give a suggestion of that.
I think that if we want to move really serious on this, we need to put a date when we would like to see the suggestions. And then after we see that, we can put an agenda and start looking to think, you know, we just see when the staff is going to do it? Yeah, they're going to do it, but when are we going to really be able to see and make decisions on it? They just put a date on it and let's move forward.
Is that a reasonable request?
We'll be happy to move as, you know, fast as we can. The issue is that we have the RDA thing going at the same time as the sales tax. And so what we can do is probably within the timeframe with that new outline, within the next, I would say, six weeks to two months, we can get something on the agenda and bring that forward. Because I'm going to be assigning some of the staff that's currently in community development to the RDA project, because we have to get information ready for the successor and the oversight board. So we'll move as fast as we can.
Personally, we can do it closest to the six weeks, still eight weeks, I think it would be important, yes. If we're going to look into a park, and the business is trying to come over here, it's going to be some difficult to open the business, I don't want that to happen.
You're right, and I, I'm not trying to step on city staff's toes either. I know they have a lot going on. And futuristically, there's a lot that they're working on behind the scenes that we don't even care of. So, but I thought, to keep it out there, that we possibly, this can be intertwined with Mayor Washburn's requests, because this is an issue, it's a common issue. And I'm not tired of hearing it, but I would rather see a solution to the matter than, yeah, I understand your concern, but tough, that's not acceptable.
And I will be okay to entertain a partial list.
Yeah.
Somebody has a list already, that maybe two, three, four points, that we can make it easier right away? Well, let's take a look at that partial list. I don't think that it needs to be complete right away in six weeks. Let's see what the partial list is, and let's try to move forward on this.
As I said, Mr. McSweeney had presented us some items a few months back. Maybe you could just send Mr. Gonzalez a copy of that presentation. So he'll send it to you afterward and be able to see some of the ideas that we're discussing. Okay, let me move on to some of these speaker cards for item 5B. I have one for Mr. Roy Payne.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Roy Payne. Currently, I'm working as a consultant with Fillmore Business Park, representing KDF and also Jack Maxwell Assessment Project. I want to start by committing councilmember Sykes for calling for the town hall meeting. I think it's an excellent idea, and it's been an excellent forum tonight. I think there's been some very good information provided to the citizens of Fillmore, and also some good feedback and direction from the city council. So I think we should be committed to that. Secondly, I wanted to thank the city manager for her work with the Watershed Protection District with regard to getting the Watershed Protection District to agree to the financing of the levy reconstruction, and also the city's obligation to that part. That's really economic development from two standpoints. One is, the questions asked by Mr. McDonald about the business park, that's wanting to assist in the viability of the business park, because that removes that giant shadow from the business park by getting that levy reconstructed. And secondly, by taking that cost away from the homeowners for the flood insurance or for their share of the reconstruction of that levy, that certainly made their economic viability better, which is better for the city overall, because those folks can't afford to spend money where they want to spend it, rather than on a levy. So I think you want to be committed. That's a very significant commitment by the Watershed Protection District, and wouldn't have happened, I'm sure, without her involvement. I want to go back just a little bit. In the late 70s, I worked for the City of Torrance in the city manager's office, and I was involved in economic development. And we were working on a business park at the end of the Torrance Airport called the Sky Park Business Park. We worked with several developers. And we just about had the project ready to go, and Proposition 13 passed. Proposition 13 limited the amount of property taxes that cities could levy, as we all know. And it was very concerned as to how that was going to affect redevelopment and tax increment, because that was the financing mechanism that was going to be used for that business park. And it wasn't probably before 13, but after probably 13, not almost certain that there was going to be enough tax increment with the cap to be able to use redevelopment financing. Well, needless to say, we were successful. We put together one of the first financing arrangements for business park development with tax increment financing after Proposition 13. Another city, as we know, has survived and used redevelopment successfully for a number of years. Some might argue not successfully, but that's another debate. So we're going through the same thing right now, as we know, with the dissolution of redevelopment agencies. And I'm confident that cities in the state are going to be working out something in the future, working out something in the future that's going to get us through that and help the state to recover, which we have to do. When I first came to Fillmore in 1989, the city council was working on the North Fillmore Industrial Park. And we were, the city was looking to get a financing to put the infrastructure in the North Fillmore with hopes of doing jobs and businesses in North Fillmore. And there was a demand for new businesses and jobs in this county at that time. We were able to put it together, but as timing would have it, we got in right at the end of the business cycle, when things started going downhill. And what I experienced in the 20 years or so that I've been involved in Fillmore's, Fillmore's always the first one to see the downturn in the economy, and always the last one to see the uptick, just because of our isolated location. I think with the Fillmore Business Park, this time, we're ahead of the curve. Because we have a business park that's been approved, the city's already committed all the financing that it needs to for the business park, so it's there and it's ready. We just need to get the businesses to come here, as was discussed by Mr. Stansley, and as I'm sure you've been here for Mr. McDonald. I've been successful over the years in bringing in the New Albertson Center, working with Fillmore Chevrolet, relocate them out to the highway, rebuilding downtown Fillmore, bringing Fillmore Western into Fillmore, bringing the visitor wider in. All these things have been very difficult to do, just because of Fillmore's location and our economic profile. But we've managed to get these things done, and I'm confident that we're going to be able to do it in the Fillmore Business Park, because as I say, I think we're staged and we're ready to move forward with that when the economy turns around. And I think it's about to that point. This city council, as well as previous city councils, have always been very supportive of the business park. We've come to you on numerous occasions, asking for minor tweaks to the project permits, and those have all always been to make the project more financially attractive to new development. I see Mr. Gonzalez, councilmember Gonzalez, congratulations, by the way, on your appointment, and his comments in the paper, that he recognized the importance of jobs and how that would benefit the entire community. And I'm confident that he will be supportive of the business park, as the rest of the council has been. I've been working with KDF and Jack Maxwell, again, on some minor adjustments to the conditions of approval, which are, again, are not intended to impact the city, but to make the project more viable to prospective investors. You can hear, I picked up positive reports from Mr. McDonald on what's going on in the market. Mr. Maxwell couldn't be here tonight, but he's getting active beginning of his project. You've heard him at the last council meeting. So we've got 55 of the acres in the park between those two entities, which is about 70% of the park, are active and are feeling very positive about what's going to happen. Now, there's a little bit of talk about regulations and streamlining. Again, I want to commend Yvonne and her staff. As far as the business park, they've always been very receptive to listening to our requests and either acting on those administratively or bringing those forward. And I'm here to urge that continued cooperation. And I'm confident that we're going to be able to, hopefully, staff and the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. Any questions or comments? Mr. McDonald?
As you know, I'm McDonald, I represent partnerships that own about 35 acres of the business park. I wanted to give you a quick update on where the market is, because that's where the rubber dits the rug. We are competing with industrial users who are looking at Santa Clarita and Valencia. Simple. There is no more land in those areas. New Hall Land has had environmental issues, which has prohibited them from developing new industrial land. So they don't have very much land available. They have one piece of land that L and R is developing on 126 and 5, which they are grading, or supposed to be grading, have permits for grading, that will allow them to have industrial lots for sale. The price of those lots are going to be approximately twice what the lots are here in the Fillmore Business Park. This is a very good sign. Because Ventura County has sore and has these issues about industrial and manufacturing zoning, there is a shortage of this type of zoning in Ventura County. And Fillmore has the opportunity, have a very large percentage of those acres that are already zoned, environmentally approved, and available for industrial and manufacturing use. So the good news is that there's very little land available, and Fillmore has a lot of the land that is available. So we are marketing our property with the following caveats. We are less expensive than Valencia. We are a business-friendly environment that likes to see new businesses come in. And we are able to process things in a very expedient manner. And I put up a map here, just for those of you who are not familiar with the market. This is the Valencia and Valencia market, essentially. And we've given the council a summary of what's available in the Valencia market. There's very little available for lease or for sale. Fillmore is an untested market. We all know about the horrors of the industrial development that was done when Ameron and all those facilities came in north of 126. I mean, that's 20 years ago. That didn't work out very well. On 126, we have the availability to create a tremendous business park. And there's no other land available. So we're hoping that the first user will create a wellspring and will create a tremendous demand for industrial users, manufacturing users in Ventura County. We have blue-collar workers that are available, and that shows in the pamphlet that I've given you. We have a tremendous workforce available in Santa, in our marketplace, Santa Paula, Fillmore. People are here ready to go to work. We have to provide them with the jobs and the facilities to go to work. We're very optimistic. In the package that I gave the council, we have proposed at least three, what we're calling unsolicited proposals, to people who are in the marketplace, who are looking for large manufacturing and industrial users, who may not look at Fillmore as a valuable market, because it is not by definition that today. But we've proposed that anyway. Our prices are significantly lower, and we're hopeful that we will have one of those that we can strike this market. We're hoping that the city will continue to be a cheerleader for us, and that they will help us get this thing started. Because clearly, we have the most beautiful, I always laugh when I come here, because I look at this rendering, and it's the most beautiful place in Southern California. It really is. And it has a main street, and it has a workforce. It really is. And it has a main street and it has a workforce. It has a viable community. What it doesn't have is jobs. Jobs. We don't want to be 50,000 people. We don't want to have, we don't want this to turn into a suburban kind of, you know, myelopole. But we do need to create a business center that will create jobs, that will have a housing-jobs balance, that will allow us to create a viable community. And that's why Roy Payne, you know, 10 years ago, took this on as a challenge to create a business park so that we could create some users and some jobs so that we could have a sustainable community. And I'm convinced, because I've been here since 2005. This isn't like yesterday. I, and some of the council people know, I've been here since 2005 creating this opportunity. And I still believe that this is a unique opportunity to create a viable community where we have a jobs-housing balance, where we can create the kind of community that you like, where a main street will have enough population and enough people to sustain it still. Which clearly it's not now. I don't want to be the bearer of bad news. But your main street doesn't work. It's a wonderful main street, but there's not enough synergy to make it work. You need to get to the next level. You need to bring a few more people in there and recreate a few more bodies so that Fillmore works. And we're optimistic that our industrial development in the business park will accomplish that.
I have a couple of questions. Do you have any businesses that are really interested in moving in or doing something there?
We have the unusual opportunity or the usual situation that Fillmore is not in the Showmark. It's just not. Ameron, I mean, way back when, we thought Ameron was going to expand. You may not know that Ameron makes precast light bulbs. They're in Fillmore. We thought they were going to expand and that's why we originally got involved in Fillmore. But other than Ameron, you don't, you do not have currently anybody that wants to be in Fillmore. And so our challenge as a community, as a city council, as a developer, is to create an environment so that people will want to be in Fillmore. So in your package, you will see that we have, we have given proposals to three large users of space. AMS, Calavo, which is a user in Fillmore, and Paint Sundry's. We have given what we call three unsolicited proposals to people who maybe didn't think about Fillmore because Fillmore is not on everybody's radar, quite frankly. Valencia and that area is on their radar. But we're not that far away. 15 minutes away, 18 miles. We're very close, but we need together as a city council and developers to create the environment so that one group will say, you know what? You're right. Fillmore is the right place to have a business.
So what is it that we as a city council need to do for make this happen?
Well, it's very simple. You need to put the flag up that says, we are development friendly. We are business friendly. We want your business. It sounds simple, but you know, we work in lots of cities where we get everything but that. We need your support. Yvonne, as the city manager, has helped in terms of trying to change the minor modifications to create kind of the economic wherewithal to make these deals happen. But the city needs to throw a big flag up that says, you know what? We want your business. We are business friendly. It's very simple.
I need, we need to buy the flag. And we need to make this.
I'm sorry that it sounds so simple.
But that's okay. I mean, better.
Business, you know, in today's environment, and I'm sorry to get political, but you know, business has been vilified. Small business has been vilified.
Now another question. How many jobs will you estimate that this park will create? Obviously, I'm not going to hold you to it, but just.
Well, I mean, Roy has the figures. We have about 65 acres. We have over a million square feet of approved businesses. And I think the number is 2,000 or 3,000 jobs, depending on whether it's manufacturing or warehouse space that's available. But there's a tremendous opportunity to create the types of jobs that the people of Fillmore and Santa Paula and those people need. We don't need bureaucracy. We don't need a lot of pushback. What we need is someone to move with us that says, you know what? These people have invested, my partnership has invested millions of dollars of hard-earned cash to create this environment. And, you know, we need your help. We need to throw a flag up that says, we want your business. I would also like to say that in fairness to the city council and to Roy Payne and to the people who have been with the city, the city took this on. We did, the private developers did not do this. The city did this. The city paid for the environmental impact report. The city paid for all of the issues regarding trying to get this business park approved because 10 years ago, the city realized that we need to create jobs-housing balance. We don't need people alone. We need people and jobs. This property south of 126 was always within the sphere of influence of the city. It was always projected to be a business park. And Roy and the council preceding, the current council, saw the vision and spent a tremendous amount of time, energy, and money. This didn't happen overnight. We had to do an environmental impact report. We, I mean, this was a tremendous undertaking. I've been here since 2005. It was a tremendous commitment on the part of the city. And we need to finish. We need to complete the process. We need to bring those jobs to the community. Because the jobs are, the people are here. If you look at our chart, the amount of blue collar workers that are available is astounding. People need the jobs. And there's no reason for them to drive to West LA or Ventura or Camarillo when they could have the jobs here. So.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming.
I'm sorry that it just seemed a little long, but 2005, 2012, you know, we're very optimistic that finally, the economy has come back and we're able to now make proposals and we're going to get some people to come here. And it's going to be successful.
Make it as soon as possible.
I do have one more speaker card on this item. Mr. Alex Malakoy.
Good evening again. Kind of lost my thought. First off, my question is, what has the council done to facilitate economic development this past year?
Well, that's a good question. I can't think of anything at the moment.
I remember.
We've partnered with economic development and partnered with the chamber. We did whatever we can to.
I remember one person campaigned on the fact that they were going to contact all the business owners that had properties that were vacant. We've got probably three right on Santa Clara. We probably have another three on Central. And we probably have five now on the Bond Center. Has anyone approached any of these property owners to see what could be done? I also would like to state that at one time, I was considering moving my business to the Redken Building. And I was told by the city staff that that was not a probability unless I built a federally guideline-handicapped bathroom. So basically, that building is now still vacant and for sale. And so there seems like there's a lot of obstacles with some of these older buildings. The Fillmore Cafe is now pretty much needing to be retrofitted or torn down to become something viable. So I don't know. I mean, has anyone approached any of these?
I think Mr. Sykes wanted to make a comment up.
I'm very pleased that you were paying attention to my campaign desires. And good point. Unfortunately, our city is saddled with debt. We've been spending an immense amount of money over the years. So now, time has come for us to want to take care of these different projects and the money's not there. However, I will go into depth by speaking with some business owners. I haven't spoken with individuals that were tenants in the Baldwin Center, but individuals who have went out of business. Went out of business because number one, they didn't have the collateral. They didn't have the money to survive. And number two, it's the overall economy. That's the issue. Part of my vision was to have an aggressive anti-bli program. Unfortunately, I came in at the wrong time. We don't have the funds. It's kind of like a professor going into a college dorm and seeing a frat party that's ended. Time for you to clean it up. That's where we're at. So, do I quit now? No. We do have time. Just like Rod mentioned. Now, this is the time to set a positive tone and try to bring businesses here. Yeah, light is an issue. It will always be an issue. I've said this before I was a candidate. And it's a hindrance to prospectors that want to come here. It's a given. It's simple and almost.
I just wonder why no one in this world wants to sell shoes to 14,000 people in Fillmore.
Because they don't make money.
Exactly. Basic economics.
I would, I would like Mr. McSwen to address the ADA issue. Would you mind making some comments on that kind of as far as the Redken Building?
I can do my best. I really should be the building official. There are some codes that are not city of Fillmore codes. Not state code, federal laws, so forth, but we're obligated to follow them. And one of them is when a building has been vacant for a certain period of time or it's an older bait, older buildings, that needs to be brought up the code in that referencing, including the bathrooms, American Visibility Acts, and accessibility. Do I have that pretty much correct? So it's not a, not a city of Fillmore ordinance. It's an ordinance coming from the county.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Stewart. I don't know the exact circumstances of this gentleman's business. I'd love to discuss it with him sometime. We do have some flexibility in regards to state regulations with the accessibility. One thing we do not regulate is the Americans with Disability Act, which is a federal statute. And businesses are actually bound by that requirement. So there again, I would love to discuss this. And as I stated when I came to help out Fillmore again, is that I try to be as flexible as we can with all of these regulations and encourage business. We are actually working with the cafe, trying to come up with a solution so they can actually do some work. We're working with the old packing house classroom, the city yard area. A new potential owner there wanting to do renovations and we're working with them on that. So there is some synergy happening in the community and your staff is working with those individuals to try to help facilitate this to bring development, jobs here into town. So you continue.
Thank you very much, Clark.
I would like to make a comment with regards of why a company will not want to sell shoes to 14,000 people. And it is my opinion, it's my opinion, that the reason why is because people are leaving Fillmore to work and they're shopping in the places they're working at. And if we can bring these jobs in here, now we'll have hopefully 2,000, 3,000 jobs in town, which they're going to be shopping in town, not shopping in Ventura, not shopping in Moore Park, not shopping in LA. And that's why it's so important to bring those jobs in here so we can attract those shoe company and some other companies to build places for jobs. That's my opinion.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else who wishes to comment on item 5B on economic development? Any other discussion or comments? Yes.
I think we need to clarify something and I appreciate KDF recognizing that the city has been contributing the dollars. The dollars that were available were primarily through the RDA, which is, has gone away. And also through some development like DIFs and a urban, what I would call urban growth management plan. So some of the tools that were available to the city or the agency to do economic development with the state action are no longer available. So that's why everybody's having to reshape their thinking in trying to figure how do we get there with what we have available to us now.
And we have made some substantial contributions to the business park. This car is running the money for the levy, paying half for half the levy, road, the water well, we drilled well number nine. We found the money for that. So we've tried to facilitate as best we can the business park within our limits of ability. And fortunately, I think as Mr. Sykes pointed out, the economy, the timing was really bad on the economy there. So we'll see how it goes. All right. So let's move on to item, thank you for coming. We really appreciate it. Item 5C is information and discussion on reverse microphone. This is the same information about our public safety folks.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. First of all, Patrick May was going to give his presentation, so Mike and I are going to step in really quick. He had a meeting to give the same presentation to. This took a little longer than we expected. First of all, I want to thank Annette's crew for setting the tables up and everything. And then also I'd like to thank Louis Farah Jr., who actually at the last minute was able to set up the microphones to accommodate this town hall meeting. So Louis, thank you very much for taking care of that at the last minute. Mike and I both talked a little about the old reverse 911, the reverse 911 system and the new VC Alert that has been, that has already been implemented as of January 3rd, I believe. So Yvonne, Farah, Mike, can you give a little background on the reverse 911?
Good evening. As Chief Regal said, we did have the reverse 911 as of 2008. And that program, as you know or may be aware, is when we have a public safety, a health alert, et cetera, is a way for police, fire, other agencies to get information out to the public in an expedient manner. And reverse 911. And reverse 911 was really ahead of its time back in 2008. I had the experience of drafting and sending out the very first reverse 911 message to a portion of residents in Canario when a homicide suspect fled the scene at 4:00 in the morning and went running towards a residential and a business area. With reverse 911, we were able to, with a laptop out at our command post in the field, coordinate an area that we had a database that those phones in the business area, also residential area, were called with a message, basically indicating there's an emergency. And it was the suspect that fled into the area, this is the description, "Please see that suspect, please stay at your house," and then call 911. So it's a very succinct 30-second message to get out to the public about the safety issue. With that said, and in drafting that and sending that message out to, it was about, oh, 3 square miles, which wasn't that big, it took over an hour and a half to get that message out. And that takes a lot of time. As technology has advanced, now to 2011, the Ventura County Sheriff's Office set up emergency services with the help of Patrick Maynard as well, drafted the new VC Alert system. And that is much, much, it's incredible how fast technology can lift us into just exponential speed, especially when getting a message out that's critical, whether it be road closures, fire alerts, criminal type of emergencies, et cetera, to get that information out and then keep everybody informed. And VC Alert does just that. And Regal's going to take over and talk a little bit more about exactly how you sign up and how you get the information.
Some unique feature of this VC Alert is it gives you choices on how you will be alerted. So as Mike was stating with the reverse 911, is it only went to hard lines. In other words, it only go to either your business phone or your residential phone that was actually connected into your home. This VC Alert gives us, or gives us, the citizens and business owners, the opportunity to pick and choose, or give a variety of avenues to get notified. For instance, and you can put them in order. So when you register, and the key is, and I want to make this extremely clear, is the key is you have to register. So you have to get onto, sorry, I'm getting a little, www.vcalert.org. And it's really very quick and easy, it's very quick and easy to register. But you, for instance, I got on and registered, and I registered my personal cell phone, my work cell phone, my wife's work, my office work, my hard line. And what it does, it goes down in series. So if you put your cell phone at the top of the list, if no one answers within a proper time, it switches down to your hard line. If it doesn't go, if no one answers there, it goes to a text message. If no one acknowledges it, it goes to an email, or whatever you register on that, on those specific ways you would like to get notified. It also is unique if you happen to live, or if you happen to work in Ventura, for instance. And you want to get notified if something happens around Sespe School, or your children's school, for instance. It'll notify you if there's something happening within that area through this VC Alert. So it's not, it has a wide variety of ways that you can get notified. But again, the key thing to make this work, for us to get notified as citizens, is we have to get online. Actually, you can either get online to register at www.vcalert.org, or there's a 805 number, 805-648-9283, where if you don't have internet access, you can actually call this number, and they'll walk you through the registration process. Or if you fill out the bottom part of this pamphlet, you will mail this in, and they'll send you the way, where you can actually write in and send it back to them, so they can register for you. Again, the key part of this is that you have to, that you have to register.
I've mentioned that now. Also, what's nice about this too, say if you have an elderly parent or somebody that's not living with you, you can register them or get their information forwarded to your phone. So if you want to check on an elderly parent, relative, et cetera, or somebody that may need some transportation, that's an option too. But once again, it's about registering, getting us out, getting us the information, and getting you aware, so especially if the 126 is closed, or some other natural disaster happens, we'd be able to information.
Miss McGrath, there's also a link on the website, I noticed over the weekend with VC Alert, that I believe they click that link, they can register.
I registered this morning, and it's sweet, I was able to put my parents' house, I mean, it was very well, not, I said, well, star.
Yes.
Oh, thank you. I just want to know, I want, I want to have an emergency, but I would like to see how would it work, actually, when we have something happen, with business, with everything. It seems to be a great, great tool. How can we get into, not just us, but to everybody else? How can we get all the city involved in this?
Well, that's a good question. And Monica and I will be going to the service clubs throughout the city and get the word out to it. We are just going to send a press release, not only, actually, the sheriff's department has already sent out a countywide press release. I have a press release set for our local papers that we'll get tomorrow. And we're going to be doing our local press release. But Monica and I will both be going around, including Patrick Maynard, will be going around the different organizations to make sure that we get the word out. The other thing I forgot to mention about this VC Alert as well is that there's two options you have. You can have the option to get alerted for emergency situations only, or you can sign up to get general notifications, like, for instance, for instance, let's say there's a scheduled power outage in a certain, a specific area in the city. They will notify you that the 200, 300 blocks of Sespe Avenue will be affected with a power outage. You can opt not to get notified for general information. You know, there's going to be street closures, like Monica said earlier, if the westbound 126 bridges go out, you know, there's a detour. These are specific. But you have the option of just sticking with the 911, or opt to do both, general information and emergencies. The one thing that I want to make clear to the citizens and who are listening out there, and to all of us here, is that this information that you put on this card or on this register does not get sold to commercial solicitors. So you aren't going to get, this one, your information will not get sold, so you get spam or phone calls in the middle of the night if they want to sell you insurance, or like, or retail items. So this will, that's not what the purpose of this question.
Eventually, as this progresses, will this be tied to alerts for meagans law, individuals who, you know, are, say, looking to buy a home, and they want to make sure that they're not buying a home where there is a case in there that's potentially harmful. I'm just curious if that's something, because I know that it's all woven together, you know.
Most likely not.
No.
We've got some laws, we've got to be for privacy issues, that would not be one of the reasons, that would not be one of the mechanisms.
Okay. Just curious. Thank you.
The other thing I want to mention quickly is that this is at no cost to any of the citizens to sign up or register. So, you know, I don't want the citizens out there to think that, "I'm not going to register because it may cost me something." This is actually the sheriff's department in conjunction with Public Safety, for the first year in the infrastructure of this program, has applied and got a warrant with grants. So the infrastructure and the first year of service is paid for for the grant, and then the City of Fillmore's liability for the next four years will be $1,700, which is a very, very small price for a great program like this VC Alert that will alert us when, or we can alert folks when there's any type of emergency.
Can I mention any other questions or comments for public safety?
Is there a limit to the time of the message, like 30 seconds only, or a minute? They won't go beyond that? Because this, for people, some city, some city or citizens have a 524 exchange, and that's what they pay for. And this call comes out of 648 area, which is probably the Ventura County Sheriff's Office, which is a distance away. So is there a limit, like there was with the 911, I think, the first 911, there was like 30 seconds, was there? Will there be a limit on messaging here too?
No, there is not. And there will be follow-up messages as well. That was one thing we did with reverse 911. You put out that initial broadcast, and then you need to let people know, okay, the emergency has now been alleviated, everything is good. So that's another key factor. We have to do a follow-up. And it's also the unincorporated area as well, and with the participating citizens.
Actually, the only city that is not a participant with this VC Alert, they have their own system, is the City of Sandy Valley. So if you live in Barnesdale or Grand Avenue, the unincorporated areas around the city, this VC Alert and all the other cities within Ventura County, other than Sandy Valley, is on this program.
Any other questions?
Yes. At the bottom of this form, it states you will be charged the standard fee from your phone providers for receiving emergency alerts. So should we clarify that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned it earlier. That's if you have a, let's say, a text contract that states you only can text 100 words, or a message, or I don't know how it works. If you exceed that, that's how you would get charged. But an actual normal charge for using the VC Alert, or you get a message, you won't get charged unless you exceed those minutes, or...
It's pretty interesting.
Right.
It goes back to the cell phone provider.
Exactly.
That's really correct.
But if it goes to your hard line, or an email, there's no charge. But that, it only exceeds like a limited amount of minutes or text messages.
You mean, you have unlimited texting, for example?
Exactly. Doesn't matter if you, all the kids have that.
Yeah, the news station have to.
All right. I think, I have one question. Can you put this on Channel 10 to inform?
Yes, we will. Like I said, I have a press release for the local papers that we'll send out tomorrow or Thursday, and then we'll put this on Channel 10 as well. And then just let everyone know that Monica and I are always available for any questions, so feel free to call Monica, preferably Monica, no, I, or myself, for any questions.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Now we're going to move on to item 5D, which is information discussion on California statewide.
Mayor Council, probably they're going to make this pretty quick. In terms of the state, the vision is that things appear to be picking up a little bit, although it is spotty around California. However, there is one potential cloud on the horizon, and it's the RDA and the liquidation of all the RDA properties in California in the next, in the upcoming months. And so no one really has a handle yet on how that's going to affect the economy. And for example, some cities own stadiums. I mean, what do you do with a stadium? So there, so we're lucky in that we only own the theater, we own other things, but the theater is, is one of our concerns. So no one really knows how the dissolution of the RDA statewide is going to affect the economy yet. And the other thing that we've been able to, is that the state does intend to, there's some legislation slowly working its way through the Capitol to modify some of the legislation. And we've been told that instead, they're just going to make sure that it lapses because they feel that the state will have better bargaining power at that point. And that's true. If it's not still in play, and it's gone away, then that puts the state in a better bargaining position. And some of this ill feelings were caused by Proposition 22, when the cities were able to get the legislation passed, that the state can't do upgrades on the local agencies. So that's, that is part of the reason why the state decided to do away with redevelopment. And so if there's going to be a fix, it's going to happen after February 1st. And the other things that are going on is that the governor has already signaled his intent to further that program, because he doesn't have the revenue coming in to support those. He also wants to put forward a tax package. And he was supposed to have done this this last cycle in November. Some of you may have noticed that you're, and we put on our own sales tax measure for that November ballot. He was supposed to have put on a sales tax measure this last November. If everybody's, as of July 1st, went down to 7 and a quarter percent. And so that's that, but he couldn't get the support in Sacramento to do it. That's still in play, and he's hoping to put it on the November packet, the November ballot. And so he has a number of measures that are raising taxes, such as the sales tax, and then other kinds of, income kinds of things that he wants to put on. And he also is trying to get support for a pension reform package. However, it looks like labor, as well as the native California cities, is working behind the scenes to try and craft some sort of legislative fix to that. A lot of cities have gone to 2% 60, which is also what the council authorized effective July 1st of this year, the City of Fillmore. And so statewide, they're trying to do some pension reform, which involves going to a different formula for the miscellaneous, as well as the public safety, and increasing the contribution that employees pay toward their pension. As you may recall, everybody here that are city employees had an 18 and a half percent pay cut effective July 1st. And they, we all are paying toward our pension costs, as well as more in medical and furlough days. So that is the biggest version of what's happening at the state level. Looking a little bit better, it's spotty around the state. No one knows how RDA is going to affect this. And then the governor is still working on those things that he was talking about last year in trying to put on the ballot, which is cutting state programs, pension reform, and also the, he threatened to do away with the RDA, and he did. That concludes that presentation.
Any questions for the manager?
I just have a comment that the impact of losing the RDA on Fillmore is probably going to be greater than any other cities that I know of in Ventura County, just because our redevelopment agency boundaries encompass almost 100% of that city. So, you know, that's, that's going to be a challenge, and I know our staff is going to do the best they can to minimize the impacts, but it's going to be, it's going to be a big... That's my opinion. Is that correct?
Yes.
It's a segue.
It absolutely is. It's the ID, if you're all ready to go.
All right. Okay. Well, let me ask if there's anybody who's just to speak on item 5D before we move on to 5D.
State of the state.
Okay. Item five, information and discussion of the city's financial status.
And one of the things I'll do before we get too far along, even though there is a little section on the RDA, I'll address your point, Mayor. And one of her, what Mayor was saying was that the, the impact on Fillmore, and we're talking about actually the net impact on Fillmore, might be greater than in other cities because it's a large portion of the city is in the redevelopment agency. And that's actually what we're trying to figure out. What I, what does give me some comfort is that I have talked with other city managers and one in particular who was, gave the paper, The Star, an estimated impact on his city, so I asked for his methodology. And pretty much what he said was that it's a, it's sort of like a dartboard. That's right, absolutely. And so he doesn't really have, no one has a methodology right now to figure it out. And the primary reason is that no one has any idea how this is all going to play out. And in fact, Lynda and I were on a conference call, from an hour and a half conference call with the League of California Cities and their California Redevelopment Association. And they were trying to answer some questions that cities had about this whole process. And everybody has an opinion on things. So the next few months, things will start to settle down and we'll figure out how we're proceeding. Every city is working hard to kind of standardize this for obvious reasons. And you have to remember that there's a whole lot of, I'm trying to remember how many counties there are, this is like a fifty-eight, fifty-two, something like that, counties in, in California. And each one of them has a different take on how they're supposed to administer this, and they're going to be the ones that are auditing us and doing other things. So it is something that is a work in progress, but the good news is we're all in this together and eventually we will get it figured out. So I will start my presentation on the, a quick budget update with some basic information. Most people wonder, well, where does the money in the general fund come from? And most of it comes from property taxes. And part of what may be affecting us, again, is that number may change up or down as a result of this redevelopment action because the money's going to flow through in a different way. But again, we have no way of knowing really what's going to, how that's going to affect us. But generally speaking, we get about one point nine million dollars in property taxes. And how much we get depends on how the economy is doing and what real estate values are. So if real estate values are less, we're going to get less property tax. Now, that's good for homeowners. I mean, homeowners love it when they get a lower assessment on their property tax bill because that's less money they have to pay. The problem is for a city that's relying on the property tax money to provide services, it's not so good for us. And that's part of the reason why we've had to make cuts over the past couple of years. Sales tax, we roughly get six hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year. However, we haven't really been getting that because the state has been holding on to that. What we've been doing instead is drawing down on some money that was paid, about, the money that was paid was several years ago. When we met with the Board of Equalization in December, what they told us was that that money that we've been drawing down on, we may need to pay that at some point. And so that's part of why we're trying to figure out exactly where we stand with the sales tax and how it relates to the money that was paid out to the Inspire Development and MTS, as well as some of the money that the city got and what's owed in the future. So we are working on that right now. Another little kicker that we found out when we worked in Sacramento was that the sales tax goes to both the redevelopment agency as well as the general fund. And so there's an action on the city council agenda later tonight, kind of clarifying that, and I'll address that a little bit later in this evening. We get also fees for services, which are about four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars a year, and approximately two hundred thousand of that is development related. In other words, when a developer comes in and pays their fees. Yes, just like you. They don't give us a question, I think he's just saying that's me. I'm part of that two hundred thousand. That's what the city uses the paper staff time for that. We also have franchise fees.
Isn't that number a little bit low? If our gifts are roughly thirty-five thousand per house?
This...
Is this just an average taken over last year, or where did you get that?
That's where it's budgeted, it's currently budgeted. And so as Steve was saying, we may have a little bit of an uptick starting in January, but we'll know better when we do the mid-year. We'll have some better projections, but this was...
Or larger commercial developments, like Chevron, for instance, if they come forward?
Right.
TDF, if they're a large project?
Yeah. They haven't done that yet, but I think we'll reflect it in the mid-year.
Okay, thanks.
And we also get franchise fees of three hundred and thirty-one thousand, you know, license and residence about a hundred and forty-seven. We have grants, transit occupancy taxes, room tax, motel over there, that's where that comes from. Fees and forfeitures is about sixty-two thousand five hundred. So that's where, and that's just the largest, I took the main sources of income for, for the city. There's also miscellaneous amount. It all totals about, let's see here, about five million dollars, roughly five, roughly about five million, because we're also using some one-time funds to, to balance. And so you have, where's the money coming in? The other thing is, okay, where's it going? Well, police gets about three point one million of it. Fire gets about seven hundred and eighty-five thousand. And fire also gets some money from the RDA, so that's closer to more like a million. But that source of funding is going away. Parks gets about a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand, again, already there's an RDA contribution to that. The recreation and pool subsidy is about a hundred thousand. Then you have the finance, city attorney, city manager, city council budget. And community planning, community development and the planning function is paid for by the general fund. And then you have public works, which is streets, communities and sidewalks. So as you can see just by looking at it, the, where most of our money is going is to the safety services and to parks. What are the, what are the issues that we've been dealing with? And there are four of them, and one is really simple, that our expenses have risen faster than our revenue. In last year, our medical expenses went up about thirteen percent. The cost of the police services contract has increased about two hundred and fifty thousand over the last two years. And the pension costs for safety and miscellaneous employees have also increased, but the employees are picking up that increased cost this year. Another reason is that revenues have increased due to the economy. As I said earlier, the property tax is one of the biggest contributors to the general fund. The valuations go down, you get less money. And this shows what it used to look like, the general fund. You can see the, it looks yellow on the, in the slide there. And that is our revenue. The darker color, kind of reddish brown, is the, actually the expenditures. And you can see over the last four years through fiscal year eleven, what's happened. It's, we started out with more revenue, and then in fiscal year oh-nine, actual, as you can see, there's more. And then the change happened in ten, as you went, started feeling the, the effects of the recession and other cost increases. You can see the darker line start to go higher than what we were bringing in in revenue. And we talked about this a little bit ago, the, one of the other issues, as we said, was that no one really knows how this is going to play out, and, and we don't know what the net impact is on dissolving the RDA. The most pressing problem for us is that we got eight hundred and sixty-four thousand from the RDA, and instead, we're going to get about, I'm estimating, five hundred thousand because we were allowed at the February first to charge for our costs, but then starting February first, you can charge, the minimum amount is two hundred and fifty, but apparently it's getting interpreted so that it's not two fifty, it's really five months of two fifty. So when you put that together, that's roughly five hundred thousand, which would mean that we would have a hole of about three hundred and sixty-four thousand. And then, of course, moving ahead next year, there is a hole in the budget for not, we will have some revenue, you think, for administrative costs. It does go down next year. The max is three percent. The max this year was five percent, so, or two hundred and fifty thousand, which was the floor. So, and the last point is that the city doesn't have carryover anymore to help balance the budget. And you can see from the fiscal year oh-eight, you can see the carryover amounts graphically, how that has changed over time to where last year's, like, just tiny, about a hundred and forty-six thousand, and in oh-eight, we had about one point four million dollars. And where are we financially right now? We've cut about two point nine million in used reserves, and we decreased our general fund about four percent. And you can see what that looks like on a graph. That's a, that's a really big change for any city to absorb. And in fact, I used to be the budget manager of the city of Fresno for eight years during the first time that the state took funding from us, and I have never seen anything like this in twenty-six years. So one of the challenges for us all is it's a once-in-a-lifetime happening, but unfortunately it's in our lifetime, and also in your term. So we all get to face this together. So what was cut? We had the motorcycle officer and the part-time gang officer, and I also would like to give some kudos to Monica, because there was also the SRO, the school resource officer on that. And Monica went out and got some grants to make sure that that position was in the community, so thank you for that, you worked hard. And also you got us some money for the gang because that was something else that we had to, to cut. We had to lay off twelve city employees, and all remaining, all of us who remained took an eighteen and a half percent cut in salaries and benefits. And we also reduced expenditures. For example, we cut the paramedic amount by, I think it was like twenty-five dollars as something that we had to, to do. So every department has had to give to make this work. And the, we talked about that. The, we need one point four million dollars, and this year, the budget was balanced using six hundred and twenty thousand from the general purpose reserve, and in the reserve about nine hundred and sixteen thousand dollars through May. So that's what we have in the reserve moving ahead into this one year, two thousand and thirteen. And the redevelopment agency was paying about eight hundred and sixty-four thousand, as I said. Well, that number is obviously changing, moving ahead. So we're projecting a deficit of about one point four going into next year. That number could go up or down depending on, you know, what the, for example, what costs come in at, what the, what the sheriff is going to be charging us next year for services. As you, some of you know, we do have a meeting set with the sheriff, and we do appreciate, again, Monica and the sheriff. We, they're going to be meeting with us to talk about some proposals, since it is such a large portion of our budget. They have some ideas on how they can help us, and we'll be talking with them in mid-February about that. We will also be talking with them, with the sales tax people, to see if there are some solutions on that side as well. And that was the State Board of Equalization, that litigation appeal process is still going, that's what I was referring to when I said that we would be talking about that piece of the budget and trying to get some certainty there. And if it's not resolved in our favor, as I, we are going to be going into the budget with a large deficit and possibly around one point four million. So if we had to face another one point four million in cuts, we've been talking about this for a couple of years now, we're at the point of having to fundamentally change what kinds of services we can provide. We're looking at, we have to cut non-supporting, one option would be to cut non-self-supporting recreation programs. The graffiti removal is paid for by the RDA now. Well, obviously, that's not going to be an option, so what do you do about, what do you do about graffiti, and how do we get that done? The other thing is, we may have to look at more cuts to police or look for savings through contracting with another agency. There's fire services, first responder, or Leveon County provide the protection. I will tell you that if the county provides protection, residents would probably end up paying at least a million dollars more because our, we get a lot of bang for our buck with our fire department because we have a volunteer force. That does help us. And it makes the cost of providing that service less expensive. We need to look at closing parks, possibly no strip repair, tree trimming, or code enforcement, and possibly closing the pool. So all of these kinds of things are not palatable, they're not attractive, but that's the kinds of decisions, I think, that we're going to have to be looking at as we move ahead into next fiscal year without some new revenue sources. And then there's questions.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
For the presentation. Are there any questions from the council or public?
Can we really copy that presentation if you're leading that one of our cables?
She made, I made copies and they should be here. They were...
Are they upstairs?
They're upstairs on the, they must be at the copier. And I apologize, I thought that...
I'll get them.
Any other questions or comments?
For the tax issue. We're talking, the BOE is looking at more than a case, correct?
I'm sorry?
The BOE, the Board of Equalization, is looking at more than a case with Fillmore, that would make it even more complicated?
Right. There are several cases that the, the BOE is looking at.
And, and what are they saying in terms of how much we may, not how much, but that we may actually owe on several?
Could we technically talk about this since it's an ongoing location?
Probably best to hit this in the close session.
Probably best to hit this in the closed session. I'll let the council make that. If you want to share it publicly, it's after you.
Is it, I mean, would you not violate the Brown Act or hurting our case?
No, it's just, I think we need to be very soft spoken.
Yeah, I would, I would prefer to have full disclosure, completion of each case when we have settlements and we know what facts are, then disclose it rather than going on rumors or assumptions at this point in time.
Well, I wouldn't want to go on rumors or assumptions, but my question is, what is the BOE communicating to the city of Gilmore? Our state of being with that, we don't even have to say numbers, but what is it? I'd be a question, I'm a question for people, what's happening with the, you know, with the presentations, we said we have a tax issue, they said, well, what's the issue? So at what point are you going to say what the issues are generally speaking? Do you want to say it?
I do, I do. It's very important, I just.
Are, are, some of the cases have completed?
While we work on, I can work with the call on preparing a presentation that we can give to the council at the next council meeting.
And then work on public comment.
Yeah, no, I mean, a public presentation. A public presentation. That can be controlled as far as what we disclose.
That's, that sounds good, seems reasonable.
Yeah, that's, so some cases have been completed, right, Ted?
Yes.
Okay, so we can talk about some. Any other questions for the city manager? Do you have questions?
At some point I will answer those, or call me. Again, I'd like to apologize for taking your time, but I, I think it's very important that the issue of continuity with regard to governance is, is sometimes under best measure. When you have staff that we've been working with for years and years and years and they're gone, there's a lot that's lost. Unfortunately, it's just, it's not all in writing and I want to, I want to at this point just say that for the record, it's very important that the council recognize that the city engineer, that the city planner, that the city attorney, and I know Ted's issues are going to come up later in the, in the forum. The continuity is really important because these individuals, the planner, the engineer, the city attorney, have much more than what's ever put down in public record time. And so I, I, again, I apologize, but I want to, I want the council to understand that it's very important for those of us that are outside of the process because we deal with these individuals on a daily basis and we rely on their
Memories.
Judgments and statements and then they're, they're sometimes not here. And it's not public record, but again, we, we've relied on a lot of what they said. So with particular regard to Ted, the city attorney, he's been with this city for a long, long time and I want to personally say and as, as, as representing the bar partnership, say that he has been a very positive influence and a very positive effect of everything that's been going on. So I want to make sure that the council understands that when you let people go, Burt Rapp is a huge loss to the city, whatever the issues are, because when you, when you let go of Burt Rapp, a lot of the last ten years of everything that's happened is gone, lost, it's just gone.
Sir, he wasn't let go, he.
But, but for whatever reason, he's not here any longer.
Correct.
And I'm not faulting the council for the fact that he's gone, but the fact is, the emphasis is that the staff members that we work with, and again, we're private developers, we work with staff on a daily basis, it's very important that the council understands that the staff is what we rely on and how we make our businesses.
All right. Well, thank you very much. And, and that also just reinforces the documentation and public records, that's what, what we have to have in government is documentation.
You know, like in any business, employees can leave, they can stay, that's up to them. So, but you're right.
Again, I, I'm not faulting the council.
No.
I just want to emphasize that, this business center particularly because we have a lot invested in it, it's taken a long time and it's a lot of staff members gone and gone.
Absolutely.
And it's very important, so.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to comment or, okay, so is that it for public hearings? Yes, sir. Okay, so our next item is six A, which is the consent calendar, it consists of the warrant list for January, the month of court, and so, and before we move on, I have a speaker
Good evening again. I'm looking at page two of the warrant list and item check number one, two, four, one, five, with the second entry of address three, three, eight Central Avenue. We have a gas bill of three hundred ninety-five dollars and fifty-eight cents, which is approximately forty some odd dollars higher than two fifty Central Avenue, which is our city hall, I believe. And could any of you clarify what three, three, eight Central Avenue?
Theater, Centaur Theater.
Okay, and the theater has been closed for quite some time and we're paying four hundred dollars in gas, utility services, and why is that?
Because there are two places on one side, there are some rents.
Okay, so you're saying that the two storefronts that are in the front of the theater were paying for the gas bill?
Right.
And, and the rents combined are probably equal to this gas bill?
That is one of the issues that the city council is going to be brought to the budget.
Quite a few months ago, yes. So I just want to say this is about four hundred dollars that we're throwing to the wind. My next issue, page four, check number one, two, four, three, eight. We have an eight-foot pole craft rail for bike path for six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seven cents. Is this equal to those toilet seats that the federal government paid for years ago for twelve hundred dollars or, or is there more clarification or, or, I mean, am I seeing exactly what the council's saying or do you have more information than I'm saying?
I, I would say there's probably a whole section of the bike path, I, I don't know.
Okay, but, but my point is, is, is if I wasn't up here speaking about this, you all would just approve to motion, to, you would motion to approve these warrants?
I, I, if I may.
That's my point.
If I may say something, I, I think you're making a statement that is completely wrong. I have, I have studied this, I have, and just assuming that we're just going to prove something that we have never seen before is completely wrong and in my point of view for you to do that. I have spent good amount of time reviewing these things and these things are a question in my, in my, in my review, but just making assumption that we don't review these things is completely inappropriate.
Can you comment on that rail? We would have to look at, but councilor, the loss is correct. I, you frequently get asked questions by the council.
Can we get, can we get Mr. Malkoy an answer?
Sure, of course.
Okay, well, I, I just wanted to stick for the record that, that I have never, I don't remember ever seeing a warrant item being scrutinized by this council in the last ten years. I may be wrong.
You're wrong.
But.
Well, sometimes we scrutinize them before, before the council meeting.
Oh, so where is the transparency?
We sit down with staff and we go over.
We ask and they explain to us and if it sounds reasonable, then we know.
Okay, so when I look at this every week or every two weeks and I have a question, so I just come up here and ask. That's the transparency.
That's your right.
City manager.
Do we have to do it hours at a time to get the agenda?
The agendas, I try to look at them on Thursday, Friday, Saturday. I never find them available on the computer until Sunday, which leaves me one day to contact city hall before the meeting. So unless someone is able to answer my question immediately when I contact city hall, that's pretty improbable.
Unfortunately, we lost our IT person and we have to contract out to somebody who can do it when they have, when they're there.
So when a, when an issue like this arises, Mr. Malkoy, since you have Miss Querance's email address, I assume, please get ahold of her or get ahold of one of us. I'm sort of scared whom you associate with would be glad to answer that.
Well, I'm here tonight and you still not give me an answer.
If it's not on the internet, sir, if it's not on the internet, then it should behoove you to mention it to a council.
I have emailed Mr. Conaway to that effect. Thank you very much. Now furthermore, your attitude to be irresponsible.
All right, you're out of order, Mr. Malkoy.
Oh, he gives me the gavel for the third time. He raised his voice, why can I not raise my voice?
So I'm, I asked him to not answer, same dog.
Okay, I'm not going to argue with him. I'm speaking to you.
I apologize, I apologize.
Well, according to my math, the eight-foot pole craft rails at six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seven cents divided by fifty rails equals eleven dollars and eighty-eight cents a rail plus tax. So maybe you could clarify if that's true. The other thing, getting back to the utility bills.
I do have a question for you, Mr. Malkoy. How would you like for us to clarify that? Do you, it would be acceptable to you for the finance director to send you directly an email with how many footage are we putting over there or things like that? How, how would you like, because I don't want to come to next meeting and come out and find out that we didn't answer your question regarding the six hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
You know, I don't expect this council to answer my question because most times you do not. I just really want to make a point that I don't believe that you are overseeing the true workings of this town or else we would not be in this position.
Well, but my, my question is still unanswered. I would like to know how would you want us to answer that, because you said you expected an answer on that. Would be, I would, I just want to know whether it would be acceptable to you for the finance director to send you an email with that information, that's, that's my question.
Well, that would be acceptable, but I would suppose that when you approved the warrant list tonight, you would have to exclude that item, would you not?
Well, it depends.
Because you don't know if it's an actual true thing or not. Or are we just writing checks?
I don't know, how would you like to, I don't know, I don't know you. My question is, would it be acceptable to you for the finance director to answer your question directly either via email, either by call, or some other means that you prefer? That's what I am asking. Whether it's going to be taken out or not, that is not my position to at this point, but I just want to know if it would be acceptable to you.
It would be acceptable to me if it was researched before the check was issued or mailed, yes.
I would.
Mere.
Yes.
Maybe staff has an answer, maybe we can just ask city manager or staff to say, do we have more background on this?
Somebody had to.
And here's my concern, we've already had a bid or perform work or supply service or a product. So Alex, I hear what you're saying. I saw it, I made the assumption that it was for more than one pole. I'm sure that's the case, I have enough faith in staff that they're not going to find one wooden pole for six hundred and thirty-seven dollars, but my bad, I didn't verify that. But staff can provide that background. But I'm not going to leave the contractor hanging either for the pole or the field or that. Just that simple.
That's fair. One last thing. Getting back to the utility part, I wish that my landlord would credit me for my rent for the gas that I use. So when will this issue be brought forth to be addressed as far as the town theater building and the two rentals? Because I would love to not have to pay rent or not have to pay utilities and just pay rent. I mean, I don't know.
Mr. Malkoy, yeah, I, I just want to say those, those agreements were entered into for decades probably and.
Is it a written agreement? Could we see it?
There are these agreements, stop interrupting me, please. And I think staff has been working on presenting new rental agreements to those tenants.
If it's part of the RBA.
There's other issues with it.
Right.
There is no agreement anymore. So it all has to be redone.
We're all on hold and we have to notify the, it's unfolding in the near future, the people who have those agreements is to let them know that we have to be, they may have to be dealing with the old side or we don't know how that is all going to play out.
That's correct and I, it's my understanding that those, that as of July of two thousand and eleven, the RDA is not allowed to.
No, it was, it was actually being put back to January first.
January first of two thousand and eleven, any agreement, existing agreements that we have.
Excuse me, you've been retro for you?
Yes.
Whoa!
Now what about the, the new agreement that you made like two meetings ago regarding the railroad and the. the railroad and the building with the map? Is that ongoing by the RDA?
I don't think so.
No, it is over by the RDA, but there's part of the that agreement that encompasses not only the, the train and the visitors' bureau.
So the complete...
But see, that to me was a total giveaway too. We didn't make any money on that. It's costing us money.
That's part of our economic development.
Well, can you economic develop me and my business? I mean, is there any fair equity there?
Actually, actually, you probably do benefit from the tourism bureau's efforts.
Mayor, I think we've straightened off.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
We do have an item for us, Mrs. Irons.
Yes, I'd like to make a comment. I moved to approve the warrant list for January 24, 2012, as it is written.
Second.
I have a motion of second. I'll favor say aye.
Hallelujah!
So now?
Praise God!
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. You now? Now we're moving on to item 7A.
Mayor, if we can, just put a ride on it, and we take clarification, and make sure that, in case it goes bad, that we appreciate it.
I would like to be satisfied when he gets notified, please.
What's gonna happen is we will send it to all the council members, and we'll be so we can see what we say. Okay, item 7A, and it's adopted. This is, these next two items are part of the actions that the city has to take before February 1st to help get things set up for the successor agency. And so what's before you is the adopting Resolution 12-254, which adopts the enforceable obligation payment schedule, the EOPS, and authorizes staff to submit the amended EOPS to the appropriate parties. I am trying, and we already brought the EOPS to you some weeks ago or months ago, and at the time we said, hey, we're taking our best shot at doing this, we're really not sure, because no one was how to fill it out, but we're putting on as much as we can, and we're reserving the right to amend it. So what you have before you, we did have a, and actually, if I can ask you guys to pass it out, earlier this afternoon, we did, through email, send out a revised...
Another question.
Just, this is a quite important clarification here. Are we having to adopt this as the city, or as the redevelopment agency, or both?
We're the, we're the agency.
Okay, so now we're the, we're no longer the redevelopment agency, we're the successor agency.
No, no, the successor is after February 1st.
That's right.
Right now, you're the redevelopment agency.
That's what I thought. So right now, we're acting as the redevelopment agency.
Yes.
I don't think we know that.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. So what we did is we worked with the attorneys, Joy, Barbara, and Ted, and we went over how to fill out the EOPS, which is what we're seeking for you, and we submitted that on Friday. You all got a copy of it. As I said earlier, things are changing pretty fast as we're going through this process. And today, we found some other things that we needed to add to the list, and so what you have before you is the newest revised list, which includes the, we now have the town theater debt on it. We have the capital, which is money that originally, actually, the general fund was gonna have to top up for the deficit in the town theater fund, but since it's owned by the RDA, it's more appropriate that the RDA pay for that, so that's good news for us. That's like nearly $400,000 that at some point should be returned to the, to the city and the general fund. We also have some capital amounts that were due on there. We put on the administrative cost, that was added. There was some heritage value cost, which we added. And Linda, help me out, is there anything else that I forgot to mention that's on there?
State park.
Pardon me?
The state park.
Oh, that's right. Late, like 5:00 last night, I was on a phone call with the person from the state, and there's two parks, bond funds that the city received. One was the Prop 12, which was a competitive grant, and the other was Popcorn, which was non-competitive, and we're ready to get that one. The problem was that when the city did its competitive grant, it said it was gonna do a big list of things in the park, and so we received a grant of $500,000 for that purpose. And we've drawn down $400,000, and there's $100,000 that is still, has not been drawn down. In talking to the representative from the state, the problem is that even though we've done a number of the improvements, even though we built the skate park, even though we have built one of the softball court, not courts, but diamonds, and even though we're gonna do the top lot, and we have grass in, and the restrooms and all of that, we're not going to be able to complete the project, which they want to see, the basketball courts, the tennis courts, and the other softball. And it doesn't matter that we've done most of it. They're saying that it was a competitive grant, and because we said we would do all of it, we may not be able to hold on to that $400,000. However, I told her that we did not have the funds to repay that grant, and we needed to figure out something. And I told her we were, we had built one of the softball fields, and that we had also were planning to do the top lot. And she repeated back to me that was not material, because again, it was a competitive process, and so we may not have even got the $500,000 we were allocated if we had turned in a shorter laundry list of projects. So she is mindful of our financial problems right now, and she is going to see what they can do in terms of that, that project. And so we added it to the list because the RDA was supposed to pay for, and all we did pay for part of that project, and so it's a, we're putting it as a place for our builder on this. She is going to try and work with us, she and her managers were going to try and work with us. We're not the only city in the state that has this challenge, but she wanted me to be aware of the fact that the problem was the scope of the project that we submitted for the, and that was in 2008, I believe. We submitted that project, and so we had a large scope, we're not gonna be able to do the full scope, and so that's the tricky part. For the other grant, it doesn't matter, because it's not competitive. So we could probably draw down on that $44,000, but obviously, that may not be a good idea. What we need to do is talk to them about maybe keeping that, and we haven't had this conversation. So we have to talk to them about maybe we need some force trading on that $44,000 that remains for the other grant that wasn't competitive.
I sent questions this afternoon, it was very issued. Prior to meeting, I didn't have a response. Couple things. One, have you verified it through the city files and the city manager files if, when the original scope was laid out for that park, it was laid out and described as being able to be completed in phases? So item one. Second thing, if there's money drawn down, and I didn't have my budget, I wrote the email, and I didn't look for this afternoon, if there's money still available, then we should show that on our books for the park project. And I don't know if we still showed that money on the books or not, or was it reallocated for other purposes? If it's not on the books, where did that money spend allocation go? So those are pretty much two of the questions that I asked in the email I sent to you this afternoon. So I don't know, you can answer them now?
No, I can't, because at 2:00, we were on, as you said, you asked them in the afternoon, we were on the phone call for an hour and a half, and then we were meeting with a council member to do an orientation. So in terms of, from their perspective, they're saying that they have these deadlines, and the issue is the scope, and that's what they're hanging their hat on. And I realize you have different questions, but that's what, that's what her perspective was.
But in the grant application, if it was laid out, here's our scope of our final project, and we plan to do this in phases, you know, if we don't have anything to counter what the state is telling us, and we haven't looked at our files, then we're at the whim and mercy of the state. Whereas if we can find, and I'm sure that, you know, in time you can, we'll find those files, and hopefully, it's laid out to the state at the time of the application, that this will be completed in phases. As far as I'm concerned, we're still working on that park. This last year, we finished the ballpark, ball diamond. With $100,000 left, we probably should have been doing two ball diamonds. We're moving forward with the top lot. So, you know, I don't think that the project's over. And the third question was, evidently, we didn't file for an extension.
No, that's not the case. What they were telling us is that you can't, the problem is trying to get an extension. We have for the Popcorn is no problem. It's the changing the scope of the project when it's a competitive grant, that they don't want, that they have a problem with.
I understand. I just don't know, and there's been no information provided to us, that the scope has ever changed. Those things that were mentioned are still part of the original scope and project of the park.
Well, they may be, they may be part of the scope, the problem is they're not gonna be finished by the due date, but they want them to be finished.
What was the due date? Is it 2012?
No, they're saying that the kind of drop dead on this is, I think it's June 30th of this year.
Because I don't think there was ever any intent to build tennis courts in the next several years.
Well, I mean, the tennis courts, the basketball courts, the parking lot on the east side, and on the west side, were part of that expense.
Well, part, remember now, part of the park is in the RDA, and so I don't, I'm just worried about the top lot. And Steve, you're right, we don't want to have to pay any of those funds back, believe me. That is the last thing we want to do, and anything that we can do to try and make that not occur, we're going to do. But in the interest of this, all this whole process for repaying the RDA funds, we needed to get it on the list, so that if we do end up having to do it, that's why it's...
I'm supportive of that, and I'm, you know, I see it's on the list, and we can always pull it off if we have to. The emails that were sent out, you know, seemed like we were just gonna comply with the state's wish to pay it back. There was no saying, we still have to research this, you know what I'm saying? And it didn't, okay, you don't know what I'm saying?
Well, I, I... I think what we're trying, I was trying to provide information in a short amount of time. I talked to her at 5:00 last night, and gave as much, I gave as much information as I had, and of course, we're gonna follow up on it.
Do we know the original grant, what were the sources supposedly of income we said we were gonna use to do this competitive grant?
Part of it was RDA funds, it was one of the funding sources. I think there was some kind of diff money.
There was a lot of diff money, there was a lot of sewer money because of the emergency storage of the field itself, so there was recycled water money into that. There was multi-sources for funding that whole project.
Did we not know? Well, you need to research it, find out what the dates and everything were, if that is...
Yvonne, I'm looking at this list, and is the pool, or part of the pool, are we listing components that had RDA funding, or are we just listing whole projects?
I guess I don't understand your question. Where are you?
I'm on your enforceable application list.
I know, but where?
Anywhere. I'm just, is the pool on here? Because I believe the pool did receive some RDA funding for construction, I believe.
So why would we put it, I'm not quite, it's what we owe, and we do not owe, do we owe some money on the pool? That of which we're not...
I don't think we owe, it wasn't a loan from the RDA to build the pools.
So, no, the pool would not be on this list.
Okay.
Any other questions? Or comments on the EOPS? Anybody wish to speak on the EOPS?
Yeah, move to adopt Resolution 12-254, which adopts the amended enforceable obligation payment schedule, the amended EOPS applied to the board, and authorize staff to submit amended EOPS to the appropriate parties.
Second.
I have a motion we second. Is this a voice vote, Ted, do you know?
No.
Okay, I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, now, EOPS, and then we're going to the New Pro Punk.
New Pro Punk. I didn't get it.
And this is adopting urgency ordinance of the Philmore redevelopment agency, repealing the New Pro Punk ordinance number. It's like trying to say that really fast. The ordinance number CRA 93-1 regarding sales and use taxes, and recommendation is made for reading and adopt by a four-year-old's vote, the following ordinance by title only. And in, what this item does is that in 1993, there was an ordinance placed on the city's and the agency's agenda, which said that, that sales tax revenue would be shared between the redevelopment agency and the general fund. And as I alluded to earlier, when we went up to visit the board of equalization, they said that, they told us about that split. Prior to that time, the sales tax, since at least 2002, has been deposited only into the general fund. So naturally, that caught our attention to find out more about why the board of equalization was making this split between the redevelopment agency and the, and the general fund. So when we came back, Linda did the research, and what we found is this agreement, we also found in the files, a letter from the state board of equalization to the city staff, telling them how to undo the process. And apparently, it does not appear that that was, actually, that action was taken, and so this, but the bonds were, we believe that the bonds were paid off, and we believe that they were tied to...
so this, but the bonds were, we believe that the bonds were paid off, and we believe that they were tied to this. So when the bonds were paid off, there was no need to have that stream of revenue going to redevelopment agency anymore. And to be a cleaner, we should have, the city should have at that time gotten rid of that ordinance, which we will be reading forward in, on the city's agenda in February to clean up that ordinance and to repeal the ordinance as well as to make the, make the agreement, nullify the agreement. So this action is just asking the, is saying that we believe that in 2001, it was the city's intent to do away with this agreement, and those funds should have been put into the, and were actually, since 2002, put into the city's general fund. And what we're asking the council to do through this action is to, as a cleanup, is to make that stop.
Any questions on the ordinance?
Which number do you own, Red? The CR 12-2?
Um, yeah, why don't you just say that you need a fortress vote and.
Do we need to state the urgency?
It's in the, because it's a sales tax, and it's a tax-related ordinance, and it's in the recitals, we don't have to state it here.
Okay, good.
I move that we adopt a ordinance for the Fillmore redevelopment agency, number CRA 12-2. It's by the title.
So we have to read the title.
Of course.
We have to read the title.
So that's by the whole title. And urgency ordinance of the Fillmore redevelopment agency repealing New Pro-Tonk ordinance, number CRA 93-1, regarding sales and use taxes.
Sir.
I have a motion and a second. All favors say aye.
Aye.
New Pro-Tonk.
Five aces. And I do want to say, Yvonne, Linda, and other staff members, I know this, this whole RDA thing, just jumping through hoops, like right and left, and I really appreciate the effort that you guys have gone to, to try to, to get, to work your way through all this. And it's, it's all uncharted territory for everybody. I think you guys have done a good job of trying to keep up with it, so.
Well, thank you. It was a team effort and everybody worked really hard. All right. So, that is all of the items that were on our agenda. Are there any questions or comments from anybody in the public who wishes to speak on, on anything random?
New Pro-Tonk's not random enough, or?
I can't even say that. All right, well, I just wanted to let everybody know that we will now move into closed session. This is a public employment performance evaluation pursuant to government code 54957 for the signature. So, we're going to move into closed session.